Where in the building? And this is Franz, who is from Sweden. And Nacho.
And that's him from Spain.
So, um, you know, like, we should do this, or you know, they're kind of, it's like a friendly crowd, or?
This is, you know, so, so this is a super friendly crowd. Basically, I think we've done this for as long as I can remember. We just love having the kids who have come to our school for the past year kind of just give a sense of where you're from, what your highlights were of the year, and any lasting impressions maybe that you'll take back with you.
So, this is Julie, who is from Austria. So, she based it. So, Nacho, you wanna get off here?
Alright. So, what was your question again, sorry?
Just what are your, what, what, what were some of your highlights of the year? And, and what do you think you'll take back?
So, in the year, I, I got another, another perspective, because where I live in Spain is a much more urban area, and it's much more rural compared to where I live from. And also, another big difference that I enjoy a lot is the after-school involvement from the school, because in Spain, I do, I do staff after school, but it's out of the school, you know? So, I, I, I like it here a lot, because it, it creates a big school spirit. It's very nice.
What, what year, is it comparable, like freshman, sophomore, junior, senior? Like, what year would you be, or what year were you here, and what year would you be back home?
Yeah, so that's, that's another thing here. I'm a junior, but in a class, I'll be with a sophomore and a senior. While in Spain, I'm in a class with the same people, which both give you different things. And I, I, I liked being like with different ages, people, same class. I think it's a more flexible system.
And yeah, so I think it's very important, and importantly, what you were saying about the school spirit, because that's where I come from, from Sweden, Stockholm. School is school, and then you can go and play soccer, or club team, or basketball, or anything. But it's like, there's just so separate, like, here you have like the soccer team, where I played, the, um, varsity soccer team, and we won the state championship, and that really made my year so much easier to make new friends, and to just like, connect with people. So, yeah, we're just, the school in general, when we came here the first day, we had, we had Lincoln taking care of us, and I know one of the two, one of my two Lincoln leaders. And, and, yeah, it's just been like, because I come from a school where we had a hundred students last year, because this was, it was like a new school. And I come here and it's 1,200 students? Yeah, it's quite, it's kind of a shock in the beginning, but it's, it's different, and it's a great experience, so.
How about you?
Okay, I actually prepared something.
Excellent.
Okay, so, hi, I'm Julie. I'm an exchange student from Austria, as you know. And I've been here for about 10 months now. And before I left Austria, everyone kept telling me that 10 months or a year is such a long time, but it's not now, as my time is almost over. I feel like I've been here for like a month, not longer, because time flies by so fast. And at CDU, I attended 10th grade, so I'm a sophomore, and I really enjoyed my time here. So, the past 10 months, they've been the most awesome and amazing, life-changing and challenging months of my life. And this year, it definitely changed me a lot in a lot of different ways. And I learned more than I could have learned at home in such a short amount of time. And I grew so much in my personality, and yeah, it definitely changed a lot. During this year, I developed a lot of friendships, and then hopefully it lasts a lifetime. Going back home, it will be challenging, and I'll take a lot of memories with me, like going to prom, or winter ball, or just like simple things as sleepovers with my friends, or just doing the Penguin and Punch, which was a lot of fun. And then being on the school sports teams, and I really liked that, it was a great experience, because we don't have that at home. We do club sports, and just nothing after school. And the first time in my life, I experienced, um, school spirit. We don't have that either. And I wanted to thank you for giving me that chance to be here, so thank you.
Does anyone else have, do you guys have any questions, or comments, or?
Have any of you had a chance to travel around Vermont, or will you get a chance before you, before you go home?
Yeah, so, um, I've been to some places before now. I went two weeks ago to Canada to pick up some puppies. Right? So, with Donovan Johnson, we went to go some ball mill, yeah. Uh, uh, with the football team, I've been to a few schools. Apart from that, on Christmas, I went to Pennsylvania. That's where my host father family is from. Also, I went to Connecticut to see a close mother's family. On the spring break, I went to Florida. And then in Florida, I went to Miami and Tampa. Um, that's pretty much about it, for now.
Is this the first time you've played American football?
Yeah.
What do you think?
I'm fine.
And I haven't been, I've been to a couple places, um, with the soccer team, went to different schools, and took the bus through different towns, and, and we've gone to different places and had like cheese tasting, and a lot of maple syrup. I probably had more ma, like maple creamies than any, anything else. That's something I wish we had in Sweden.
Tough to send those back to you.
I wanna see, um, the capital of Vermont before I leave though. And that's, yeah, that's pretty much the only thing on my list that I haven't been to.
Isn't this weekend his Bernie's? That would be an experience to go to Montclair.
Yeah, but he just, he has a message saying it's Saturday and Sunday, so you gotta figure out which day it actually is.
Travel with your parents?
And, yeah, I have my, my parents, um, coming from Sweden, so went to, yeah, we were, we took the car around Vermont and some different places, and to New York. And, yeah, also went to Ben and Jerry's factory. I light up the year, far from school.
Yeah, I went to New York with my host family in January. And I went on a trip to Los Angeles, and Las Vegas, and Phoenix in March. And during spring break, we went to Naples, Florida. Yeah, that's it. And my parents are coming in the end of the year, and then they're going to Boston and New York.
So I think all the kids are always amazed at how different the school systems are, and how welcoming they are. And I think it's, um, a nice opportunity for you to hear that, yes, we're doing good things, and we're doing things right, the kids enjoy them. And, you know, sometimes the question is, so can we bring some of this back and, and, you know, let our staffs and teachers at home, at home, know that there are other ways to do things? And sometimes the families, the natural families will come, and they will say, oh, but school is fun here, so you can't be learning anything. And the kids are right there to say, no, no, I mean, it's hands-on, and we really have the opportunity to explore things a little bit more in, in depth than, and it doesn't have to be boring to learn something. So, that's kind of the takeaway. It's like, wow, you know, these are fun places to be. So, we do thank you for, for opening the doors for us, year after year. I'm, I'm still, at this time, without families for the fall, but I'm still shaking the trees, so hopefully we will come up with some more students for the fall, so.
Great.
Any other questions?
Thank you. I know it's not easy to, I don't even like standing up in front of this group of students, so thank you for sharing your experiences and your perspectives.
Thanks for coming.
Enjoy the last few weeks. Good luck on finals.
Hoping for some sunshine to come out. Sunshine.
Thank you. Okay, um, 4.0 presentations, 4.1, our last indicators, proficiencies.
Yeah, so, this is our wrap-up to academic proficiency, uh, in the cycle of presentations. And so I wanted to start by just reminding us of what our purpose was in the beginning. And it was to understand the current system and practices that are in place to support the student in their efforts to become proficiency on the expectations set forth by the state and the district. We were shooting for four key understandings. Uh, the first two addressed the system that we built here and the requirements of the state. So that very first day, way back in, I think, November, October, I showed you some of the, some of the systems that are in place, and the hierarchy. And then we had teachers come in from all the different schools, many different grade levels, many different content areas, and show you what it looks like in action, um, in the classroom and with their students. And so now we want to come back to the system. The first night, I shared with you, like I said, the hierarchy within the system. I showed you, it's over there now, the, uh, the LEAF document, um, which is our, which are our graduation standards. Also shows you the common learning targets we developed, that live underneath them, and what the relationship is. And then we showed you proficiency scales, uh, for a lot of the teachers who came in here, but also lived underneath the targets. Tonight, I wanted to wrap up by talking a little bit about data, and what you can add to with data within our proficiency-based system that we were not able to do before the shift. And look at a lot of the potential for how we can use the data. Well, actually, we're sharing a lot of data tonight, it'll be more sharing strategies on how to use the data. Uh, we will be showing, sharing quite a bit of data, about four different measures of data, uh, at the retreat. But tonight, it's really to show you some of the practices that we've got in place. Okay, so if you follow the last slide. Oh, yeah, I'll do that. Nevermind. This is everything we did, in case you didn't run. Slides been a lot, okay. So, I've learned the value of looking back when you talk to folks about where we are and where we're going next. Often, we make the mistake when we're implementing initiatives to constantly bombard our folks with, here's where we are, here's where we need to get, and then keep the work upon them and say, go get it. Um, but it's really important to track your progress, keep looking back at where you started. So I want to do that a little bit today, when I talk about the data that existed before this shift. And while, uh, the high school did this work longer than three years, the system shift, where we tried to move the entire system, is about three years old, we're in our third year of that. And so I'm gonna look back about four years ago to some of the practices that were in place relative to data. So if we wanted to know student achievement data, um, before this shift, we had very few indicators that were reliable or were best. We often had to look at kneecap data, which has now been replaced by SNAK, it was the state mandated, um, common assessment. And it was in ELA and math. And we had science kneecaps as well. We had our own common assessment system, um, but I'm, it's definitely true that we, it is more robust for the younger ages, and there are fewer and fewer reliable assessments as we get older in the common assessment system. And then you think about classroom data, and I remember as a teacher, we emphasized back then the kneecap scores a lot as indicators of student achievement. And it drove me a little bit crazy, because we weren't looking at less classroom data. And I kept saying, what these kneecaps are like, a couple hours, or maybe four hours snapshot for a whole year, often of juniors, because those teach in high school, who have questionable motivation often about the importance of this particular assessment. And I'd look at the data, and I'd go, that's not what I'm seeing with so-and-so, and so-and-so, and so-and-so. So why aren't we looking at more classroom data? And then I discovered why. Um, I'm gonna show you some of the classroom data we had previous to this move, so if you can click the classroom. So what I've done, actually, it's classroom, I'm sorry. I screwed that up, yeah. Yeah, it's the next one, there. Perfect. Okay, so, and it doesn't really matter how well you can see it, um, you'll get the gist of what I'm knowing of this. So, uh, what I've done is I've grabbed a few examples. Uh, four years ago, when we started this shift, we pulled together a group of teachers who wanted to look at our recording practices. Motually sharing about what a student could do, uh, knew, understood, and could do. Um, and so we gathered all the reports being sent home, not all, lots of reports being sent home, from all the schools, different grade levels, and found tremendous variance from team to team within schools, level on school to school, and from grade level to grade level. And I'm gonna just give you some examples of, so if I, if student achievement is, is about knowing what our students know, understand, and can do, here's what we had in high school, and I didn't even put example of that. In high school, it was course names with letter grades. Okay, that's, that's what we knew. We could go into MMS, we could pull that data, and we could know how many people had As, Bs, etc. for course names for times. Um, and it was pretty similar to this. So then I took some examples, and I've anonymized them, taken teacher names off, school names off. Here was a seventh grade report card from four years ago, and it had, uh, you know, a list of the, uh, subjects, teacher's name, the three trimesters, and a letter grade for each, okay? So that's what we were communicating for what a student knows, understands, and can do. And then, this eighth grade report card, there were lots of people, I don't even wanna pretend that standards didn't exist prior to previous to this shift. There were a lot of people using standards, using Common Core and other standards, and this particular team, um, was using a lot of them, and was trying to report on them, and was trying to share information about students that was far more detailed than just those letter grades. I haven't put everything there, but for instance, under Language Arts, there were 20, there were 20 standards listed under there. And there were shorthand, shorthand for longer standards, um, and then grades for each. So there were 20 for the Language Arts, there were 16 for the math teacher, science didn't have any, social studies had 16, French had none, P E F five, you get, you get the idea, okay? And so, an end-of-the-year report that year had as many as 68 standards and 204 grades on it. And this was in the same school. So the seventh graders were getting a completely different experience in terms of what we communicated in the eighth grade. It may have been different within the team, within the school. And then if you scroll down a little bit, Bonnie, the last example is, uh, the other problem we ran into was that if I wanted to go find that data, I didn't really even know how to do it, because some schools used what was called Jupyter Grades, others were allowed to just send home a Google Doc or an Excel spreadsheet, or use their own platform. So I didn't have any place to go to get the information I just showed you. But the schools who used Jupyter Grades, this is from one school, um, usually did this. They gave you the topic, and then they gave you categories, classwork, tests, quizzes, projects, gave you your score out of 100, and then the percentage in terms of what value that had, to give you your overall grade. And this would appear six or seven different times, one for each different content area, okay? So that's what we had. And so that answers the question, why aren't we looking at classroom data? Because it wasn't reliable, and it wasn't robust. It wasn't giving us any, uh, any information about what kids really understood and could do. Okay. So if you go back to the slides, so, and I want to point out also, nevermind, I'll come to that later. So now, let's talk about that. Several things have changed. In the state, um, we are supposed to get our first-hand snapshot, I alluded to that, and the indicators committee, uh, has had this running joke for quite a while. We're hoping it gets us some time to do the retreat, uh, to embed it in the retreat. Uh, but it is going to have things like our SNAK scores for ELA, and math, the science assessment, a P E fitness scan assessment, uh, and English language learners assessment, the WEDA data, and a few other indicators. So it's gonna have a number of indicators in there that can give us that, in the, that common assessment data, okay? And then we still, and then now we have SATs. Why didn't we have SATs before? Because not everybody had to take the SATs. Now, Adam has everybody take the SATs, um, and it's a much better indicator, uh, in terms of us being able to use it to measure some of our achievement. Also, we still have the common assessment system. Now, the common assessment system have common learning targets that we can provide information on. And, uh, we have something called perception data that we'll show you at the retreat, you've seen some of it before, that started last year at the retreat, and it shows you the engagement survey that CDU built, that has gained a lot of momentum, um, and is now a district-wide, uh, strategy that we'll share with you. And then there's a lot of data about, uh, social-emotional learning, PDIS, that I didn't even include in here. But what I really wanted to show you, the biggest difference is the classroom data. We're the people who see them every day, me and teachers, we should be building more robust information, so we're gonna show you some of that. And actually, now, I want you to go to the jump rope stuff, sorry. That's okay. I made it a puzzle. All right. So I'm just gonna give you some indicators of these really cool things we can do now with this data. So, uh, this is a school. So this is, uh, all the students in the school, and the first thing we're showing you are the big five leaves. So the big five leaves, and how we're doing with that. We can do this for any cohort, we can do it for a grade level, that's what I usually do. We do it for particular teachers for content area, um, and we can do all this for an individual student, which I'll talk a little bit about later, okay? So now, if you can click on the informa, yeah, that one. Then underneath each of the leaves are the grad standards that live inside them, okay? So now, we can tell you how we're doing on the grad standards that live inside them. Now, if you click the last one, I T C, now, you can see all the learning targets that live inside the standard. Now think about the information we're getting about students. The, these learning targets, by the way, there's a math one, there's a science one, there's a music one, I'm sorry, a P E one, foreign, uh, world language, rather, and several math.
So is this like, all of the students' grades averaged out in that school?
Yeah, yeah, it is, and that, which is why a school cohort's not terribly useful. I just wanted to paint a really big picture, give you an idea of what it might look like if you drill down to the area that really is helpful. So, uh, so we're not gonna do this last piece, but if you were to click on one of the targets, we would then see all the students, and we could group all the students by how many are in each of the levels of the proficiency scale, okay? Specific to the target that is linked to a content area, linked to a grad standard, and linked to a link, okay? Okay, so, what's that look like in practicality? Now, if you can get out and go to the, so, and if you bring it just up to the math, all right, about there, a little, yeah, perfect. So you don't have to really see this that close to the computer. This is something that, um, that I provided, uh, principals, instructional coaches, coordinators with, at the end of semesters for the K4, and at the end of each trimester, by A. So this was built in early April. And I'm just gonna show you some of the things that we are now able to do that we couldn't do before. So, this is a particular school, I took off the name, I changed some of the, um, some of the data, and I also anonymized it by taking teacher names out of there. But this is the content area. So here's math, here are our math targets, here are common targets for math, listed in their short titles, okay? This first column is SBACK. The way SBACK provides some data is they break it up by targets they've built. And they tell you, the majority of your kids finished at, um, at or above, I'm sorry, above, at slash above, at slash near, at slash below, or below, okay? And, um, what I've done here is, and it was the color coding that was really helpful, is that we now have the teacher, we, I put three teachers in there, teachers A, B, and C, okay? The data that they have in there, the first number is the average score. Second number is not terribly important right now, it would be too hard to figure out, but it's a formula that indicates how often it was assessed, so we can see how important it was to them, how frequently were they assessing this. But the much more important piece is the color coding. Anything in blue is a, uh, common target, CBSD target, that at the time in April, had no data in there, so it hadn't been instructed or assessed yet. But it's gonna be instructed, I mean, now assessed in SBACK. And the SBACK went open mid-late March, runs until the end of May. And so schools were scheduling, and my work's best, logistically, it's a challenge logistically. So, the other column here, if I highlight it in yellow, it means last year's, this in this case, eighth grade, was below or at and below primarily, with this particular skill. Which, so then you start wondering, huh, then we gave SBACK before we taught it last year. So I checked back with everybody, some of us took SBACK before we taught it this year as well, okay? And we looked at the early data, there's correlation there. As one of our coordinators said, when we looked at it, with the key takeaway, if we teach it, things tend to learn. So it's really informed some great conversations, because those folks were able to go to teachers and say, hey, this is gonna be on SBACK, when are you gonna be teaching this? Oh yeah, we're gonna be teaching it two weeks from now, we're not giving the SBACK until, you know, early, or, oh yeah, I'm giving the SBACK next week, what am I gonna do?
But we would be teaching this anyways. This isn't teaching to test, as we know we're being.
No, in fact, those, uh, targets, we created those targets absent SBACK, and then we did the crossline.
Okay.
So we sat down with all our math coordinators and said, what are the targets at SBACK that line up with our own? And that's what you're seeing in that column, under SBACK, okay?
Jeff?
Yes?
Is this an appropriate time to ask questions, or should we?
No, go right ahead, yeah.
So, the blue shading, the common data sets, I've got a couple of questions. One is, um, what's the level of commonality? Is it common to a school, grade levels across the district, the state?
Right. So the, the target itself is a district target, expected to be assessed at this grade level, by everybody who teaches at grade level. But the data you're looking at is by school.
Okay.
So that, yeah.
And you have, you have the ability to compare school to school?
Yes.
And classroom to classroom, perhaps?
Yeah.
And then, um, you'll use the data, the feedback, to make improvements to instruction, improvements to assignments?
Yeah, improvements to instruction. In fact, I was gonna talk a little bit at the end about some of the next steps, but in most service, we'll be looking at some of this data to inform some of those conversations that we're gonna have with our shifts. And also, it also informs, um, the advocacy of our targets.
Yeah. And one other question about the commonality, common comparisons to the state, so just at the level of SBACK?
So, just, just the level of SBACK. It's the only data we've got, you know, to do any kind of crossline.
Okay, thank you.
So anyway, oh, then the other piece, just to show you, is, if this is a single bar, it means, some of your colleagues have taught it, but you haven't taught it yet, so we have the conversation about when, when is that gonna happen? And then- And then if you scroll down, it stops being blue and turns gray because there are no assessments, state assessments to compare them to. So it's just comparing to your teacher colleagues as to whether they've instructed or assessed it or not. We will be able to add science data once we finally, okay? Okay, you can get out of that. Any questions on that part? So that was the first time we've had this conversation with people. And it's made a significant difference, and the biggest difference is we're having really good conversations about when to give math S-Back next year. But it still begs the question that they can't stop teaching on May 15th because you gave us that. You've still got math to get in there, and you've still got some of these targets to address. We just need to know what's the efficacy of the instruction, so that we can look at the data in the right way. Okay? Okay. Let me see here. So, yeah, so let's just talk a little bit about what's next. So we have post-service coming up. We've got a district day dedicated to post-service. The five through eights will be working on, there's a final piece here. CDU, in one of the early charts I showed you, a fully realized system has the grad standards, the targets, the scales, and curriculum maps for K-Ds that show how your content area can execute these targets. That exists at the high school. It's pretty inconsistent in five eights, so that's one of the things we're going to really look at. Another thing we're going to start doing, Colleen's question, is, okay, we've got these common targets. We're all going to talk about ways in which we talk these targets, the ways in which we assess these targets, so that we can start creating some common ground around what the body of evidence is. So that if I get a group of 10 teachers in the room, they look at body of evidence very similarly. Say, yes, this is evidence of meeting the standard, or exceeding this standard. So those are two of the big things we're going to do. And some of them, and to kick all that off, will be a data dive first, the kind of thing you just looked at, where they'll actually be able to see, here are the common targets I picked, here's the district data, here's my school data, here's my colleague's data, and here's my, so, that's one of the things we're going to do. Also, alignment of learning targets. Meg's going to talk a little bit about the literacy piece. And so we are, with the K-4, it's going to be talking a lot about some literacy support and doing a better job of aligning our expectations around literacy instruction, and creating a vertical alignment there where there is a need. There are curriculum maps, but it's an inconsistent application of it right now, I think I would argue. So that's one of the things. And then I wanted to end with just a couple of examples that are pretty exciting. And the first one is this combination, you saw it a little bit from the science teachers, this combination of proficiency and personalization. You know, when those two things work well together. And the new RISE program starts next week. If you could click on that and go to page three, there is. We're going to show you a little bit about how they do that, how they've created that marriage. Okay. And again, you aren't going to be able to read it, but I'll look at some of the highlights. They explain the purpose, that it's an intensive session where you are fusing personal interest and passion with proficiencies. And so they've built around this idea that, there's three accountability measures. The head, the hand, and the heart. The hand, I'm sorry, the head, are experiences that focus on the pursuit of intellectual growth. The hand are experiences that explore the making or designing of a product. And the heart will be experiences that deal with personal and community well-being. And so every offering is connected to one of those. And it's got a little cleason here about the grading and the transcript. RISE will be recorded as part of a new transcript narrative. Each learning experience is marked with a short scripture and a target focus. And so if you look at the sample down here for Tolkien, it gives the description of it, and at the bottom, it's got the transferable skills that are driving that experience. Okay? And a brief example of what it might look like in the narrative. So I'm really excited about how the high school has boldly taken this challenge on, and has done, and I feel like, in a really authentic way, I think students are going to feel extremely empowered. Personalized learning is not going to feel like some trite add-on after these two weeks, but it's built around proficiency. So it is right here there, there are consistent measures there. Okay? And then lastly, and you don't have to hit the, don't hit that because it requires a sign-on and it's too confusing anyway. But I was hoping to show it, and I decided against it. So the last thing I want to talk about is, I joined a group of high school folks a couple of weeks ago to our first meeting with something called the Mastery Transcript Consortium. It's a group of educators in America and several from outside of America that are dedicated to creating mastery transcripts at the end of their experience that reflect and tell the story of the learner better than current transcripts do. Our current transcript is very much like one of those earlier iterations I showed you of the report cards, the list of all the courses, letter grades, GTA. It no longer reflects what we're seeing in students. It no longer tells that story, I'm not sure it ever did. But it doesn't match our practices. And so it's time for the transcript to evolve in many of the ways that our practices have. And so we've joined this group, it's exciting, they've created a model transcript, we spent a lot of time looking at how it fits into our own system. And the high school folks are having great conversations about how students can tell their story, and how proficiency and personalization fits into that. So that's another major next step, is to build transcript with this group, who is working with a lot of college admissions folks, so that they're buying, but also so that we don't have to go down the road again. We, a lot of what you just saw, we built on our own, in isolation. Couldn't find people to join up with us in many ways. Now we have a group that is really supportive and thinking in a lot of the same ways we are.
I can just add to that, that when they went down there, they went down there, there were people who were there, who were the keynoters and who were there to share. And after the CDU folks shared what they were doing, they ended up in a room with their own whiteboard and sharing what they were doing here.
Yeah, and it was funny because one person, during a break, was talking to Emily Rankin, and was talking, talking about, finally, she goes, wait a minute, did you, Randy, that wrote that book? I read that book. So, like, yeah, did you sign that book? So, yes, we have, really, we've, we've brought some tremendous experts who have led us there. Much of what I saw, I showed you, is the result of extremely hard work by a community of educators who are so dedicated to our kids and have done remarkable work. We have a long, long ways to go to make this what it can be. But when you look back at where we were, I'm pretty proud of the growth. Any other questions?
That's all. So I spent 13 years on the board with the same frustration that administration had, which is there was no good data on student achievement, and this is just phenomenal. I mean, I don't know if you can, maybe those of you who've been doing this, looking at this for a decade, can understand. It's like, the only information you would get would be immediately followed by, but of course, this is only one test, and, you know, and so this is, I'm glad I'm not on the board because I don't know how you could absorb all this. It's going to take some work.
That's why we have a retreat, a well-designed retreat.
Yeah, actually, when we didn't show you on the data in that spreadsheet, if we looked at humanities, where last year's group finished above on several, if you look at the scores from the teachers on them, they're also above. And so there's quite a bit of harmony there with what we're seeing. And that's the way it should be. But when it doesn't happen, it's usually the one-time assessment, that is the owner would say.
What do you, what do you think is the timeframe to get, you said, the CDU is pretty much set. They've got their system up and running. The five H, you said there was a lot of variability.
I think the last piece, for when I say all set, what I mean is that the hierarchy of systems is built. And now we have to, of course, sustain it, and us actually live in the classroom. But it's really about being able to say, here's the curriculum that lives underneath these targets. When I say you, your son can use credible evidence to support a claim, in this class, at this grade level, it means this. That hasn't been documented, as well as unlikely to be documented.
So it'll be done in two weeks.
We start the work, we start the work here in a couple of weeks. I shouldn't say we start the work. I mean, if people have started, we start the coordination of the work. And, you know, the expectation I'll put in front of them is that right now, you can build it the way you want to build it, you can use what you already built. But we need one place to go where I know it all lives, to start, at least. And then we can start figuring out where we need to be more confident. Yes?
Do all the schools now have jump rope available to them, from K to?
From grades five through 12, they have jump rope. They do not have any K-4, we use what's called a DCAT report card. There are a lot of reasons for that, primarily, they're generalists. And to be responsible for five to eight targets in jump rope, there's a challenge enough. If you were a generalist and you had 28 targets you were trying to manage, so we have to really think carefully about what the alignment looks like.
So is the reporting, I know you're saying there's still at least two systems being used. Is the goal to, it sounds like you're saying, or my understanding is, the goal is to at least have like a consistent repository for all of the information, so that at some level, you can go in and see everything in one place.
Yeah, we do have a repository for all the targets. So all the learning expectations are in one place on the website, but isn't the K-Ds that live under, the curriculum connection. That's what's, they exist in many, many different places, in pockets, in Google files, in Google Drives. Yes?
It's very exciting what you've done, and I can see over a couple of years, you'll start to be able to do trends, data analysis, and so forth, and that's really exciting. I just have a quick question about the RISE. I valued that, your description of where proficiency and personalization meet in that two-week experience. I think it's exciting, and I like the document that was put together that shows how it can be mapped out. And I'm just wondering if there are plans to capture a student perspective of the experience and related to quality of instruction, quality of the experience, and the different variations.
Yeah, I'm not the expert on RISE to go to on that, but my understanding is there are several exit strategies to get that information, much like that for grad challenge. And these two are going to be experiencing RISE in the next couple of weeks, so we can report back and tell you, yeah, how much we, how much feedback we have for it in what capacity.
Yeah, because I imagine it'll be a lot of variation because it's brand new.
Oh, yeah. And they're going to have, I'm sure, a lot of revisions, and so they're probably going to want a lot of feedback.
Yeah.
And I think, in terms of that program in general, because it's a new program, and it's also was started with the Innovation Fund there, and I've gotten a lot of information from, or feedback from people even before it started. I would be interested in the board maybe wanting to hear about that program next fall, when, you know, they've had the chance to actually do it and collect some data.
You should have, probably, to use that school calendar to make a very specific plan.
So that, that'll come up.
Thank you.
Oh, Kelly.
Well, you're not done yet. I'm kind of writing a comment, but I think it's helpful as we think about this. I think, to Jean's point, this is really dynamic. And as we think about messaging and how this RISE program and personal learning plans and how it ties into grading, and our curriculum, and our testing, I mean, it's all super comes together, right? But what I would love, and you're a fabulous presenter, so this in no way is a critique, and I walked in late, and so it has really nothing to do with this particular presentation, but a little bit, I'm just going to use it as an example. What's difficult as a board member is when we get slides like this, but they're so wordy and you won't be able to see this, or this data, but you won't be able to see this. So I think going forward, it would be awesome if you can educate us, because we're going to become the mouthpieces also for why we're doing things a certain way. And as a group, and I say this a lot for marketing and communications too, we have like the key points of like what's going on, and where we're going, and what the roadmap looks like, and then all this great data. Because I love the data too, like, that stuff appeals to me, maybe not in this form. But it's super, it's cutting edge, and it's very dynamic. And it's not going to be finished or polished, but we can really message that, and that should be part of what our targets are for going forward. And this ties into finance and what we were doing last, you know, a couple of weeks ago, how we can become better communicators to the community and make them informed about budget decisions and why we're doing what we're doing. You know, it's, before it was so confusing, oh, this is jump rope, and we're going to do personal learning plans. And as a parent, frankly, it's still kind of challenging for jump rope, but I get it in the bigger picture, so I'm a huge fan. But as a parent, I'm still like, what the heck, jump rope? So that's just my comment question.
Yeah, and we will put data in front of you that you can see at the retreat. But, yeah, you're right, it's hard. When it's this complex, the challenge is to simplify it in a way that you can define it, and defend it to a certain point, but, yeah, the more expert you become, the better.
I'm going to guess, before the board meeting is over, Sandy will have emailed us this presentation, and will have it. But, yeah, to your point, it's nice to get a bit of time.
But it's fabulous. It's fabulous.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Thank you for this whole year of indicators and proficiency-based learning.
Well, and I'd like to thank all the teachers who, really, I thought did a great job of giving you examples of what it looks like.
Okay, we're on to 5.0, reports to the board. We're going to go to 5.2 committees, 5.2.1, finance.
We met last, two Tuesdays ago. And we reviewed, excuse me, we reviewed the draft version of the third quarter in the mar. We'll discuss that a little bit later, so I'm not going to go into detail.
Oh, come on.
It's, it's good. It looks like we might have a slight surplus of data after the year, so it's all good things. A lot of work done with this group to get something as accurate as we have this year.
We developed a work plan for budget debrief items. We're going to work with Bonnie quite a bit on schedule, purpose, and what we're going to do with the budget purpose, and development of the purpose of the budget buddies. And we're going to potentially replace that with increased communication during budget development. So we spent a lot of time talking about the budget buddies over the last year, and the role that they've played. And we were going to try a different approach last year, where we were going to do more communication out to the community. If I'm missing anything, you're not messing with me, but you know. We developed the work plan for budget debrief items, finance, model, and target. Jean's going to work on developing options for discussion. Maybe would like to review this for the whole form this spring, impossible, so we're going to kind of have another meeting to get to redo those as a committee before we bring it to you guys. And one of the things that we heard a lot of clear throughout the club season this year is that we need to do a better job of communicating to the group of why we're doing things, how we're making decisions. So I'm working to put together a dashboard that we would be able to provide to you guys, which would be maybe 10 or 11 different key performance indicators, so you could see where we are year over year over year, and our growth and what that looks like. I'll be presenting that to the finance committee before I bring it to the board, and we'll bring it as a unit by committee, if they approve of it. Sometimes my work is not that great.
Don't sell yourself short.
And then we adjourn, so. Any questions for the finance committee?
When's this other meeting in the spring we're going to have?
We haven't figured that out yet. We're working on it.
And I just have, a thing that we talked about too is, our big sort of conundrum is how do you get more public involvement around the board process? And we are kind of twisting our focus this year a little bit, and less about like how can we get the community active, and more to what actions can we take to be more targeted in communication? Because we've kind of come to a point where we can keep switching our venues, we can keep adding collateral, we can keep, but people are going to come or they're not going to come. So we can't affect the public's actions, but we can affect our own. And we're, to Brendan's point, it's either keeping up our communications or the dashboard and articulate where we are in the process and how it works. And so it's in that spirit, we're going to keep in mind of how and if we're going to have the whole budget buddy system, because that might have run its course.
Am I understanding that part of the objective, sorry, can't see it. Part of the objective is, for a work plan for next year, is communication with the full board? Am I correct?
Work plan, what we're trying to do is to be able to proactively communicate and say where we are and what we're doing. So I don't know if there'll be necessarily communication.
So I don't know if there'll be necessarily communication, a presentation or more of a dashboard that you guys can get in advance of the board meeting.
Have an opportunity to ask questions. So our board meetings are pretty packed and we all have committee meetings that we are responsible for attending. So, you know, we want to try to make it as easy and as transparent for everybody to see what's going on and what our run rates are.
I really appreciate that. Thank you.
We're working on it. I'm not making any commitments.
Good objective. Thank you.
Okay, 5.2.2 indicators.
We met and reviewed the finalized integrated field report that we will see a bit later tonight and discussed a little bit of the context around the sharing of it tonight. And then we had a longer discussion around some retreat prep and the multiple measures of data that we are going to look at for some analysis at the board retreat that will hopefully bring us closer to a more clear marriage of indicators and the budget and how we articulate our budget goals in a way that we can actually tie to some specific indicators. And realized in our discussion too, that for board members who are not on the indicators committee, we're, we're dealing now with two different sort of groupings of categories of data and information. The way the IFR is going to organize it for us that we see tonight. And then a slightly different kind of schema for it at the retreat in terms of like the categories of data. So just getting our heads around that a bit in terms of all the information that we have and what is most important for the board.
I understand what you mean by.
Well, the, so the integrated field review that we will look at later tonight has specific categories that it's giving us feedback on and that, you know, was gaining, was getting input on. And those don't align perfectly with the same categories of data that we're going to look at at the retreat. And there's a good reason behind it, but given that we're getting pretty heavy into data in a short amount of time here, which we think is good, the IFR right before talking about data at the retreat. Just acknowledging that it isn't a perfect marriage of the same kind of categories, the way the IFR organizes it. Sort of.
Yeah, I think the education quality standards is what drives the IFR.
Our report. But based on some conferences I've gone to, you know, you look at data differently. You look at your demographic data as a separate bubble. You look at student learning, all the things we talked about. You look at perception data, you look at school processes. And so that's how we're going to organize the data look during the review. So that's, but I do think, and we'll talk a little bit about it when we get to the integrated field review, give people time to digest it before the retreat and then we'll try to do some of that crosswalking.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, 5.2.3, policy.
So we've met twice over the last month and we've talked about the kindergarten policy and the flag policy, both which we're going to have on discussion matters. So hopefully everyone pre-read those so that we can have a conversation about them.
Do you guys have a standing meeting time or no?
No, we do not and it drives.
Next year we will.
We had it for a while and it fell apart during the budget season.
Okay, but the intent is to have.
But as Kelly said, yeah, we're going to.
Have a set one in the fall.
Kelly wanted iron for us last week.
Who was killed? What, and you're not meeting during the summer.
Wait, that was a Game of Thrones reference, wasn't it?
Don't ask Brendan. He doesn't watch. Game of Thrones. But you're not meeting during the summer, policy.
No, it's not in our charter.
Who wrote your charter?
I'll do whatever they want.
So we'll, so that's it for policy. We'll have discussion on the two policies later on. Okay.
I don't want to give it away, just like Brendan doesn't want to give away the FMR.
Okay, 5.3, cult report. So I want to start with a shout out to Kate Grunling, CDU junior, actually. I was thinking about for next year, but maybe you'll tell us a little bit about your reward.
This summer I was selected to attend Battles One Academy in DC. So it's a program run by the Marine Corps. And they select about 100 students from across the nation to come. And we do learn from guest speakers. We do a volunteer project. We get to go out to Quantico. And I got to, each kid gets to bring a mentor. So I selected one of my teachers as my mentor. And so it's like an all expense paid trip that we get to go down there.
Excellent. Which teacher did you select?
Ms. Needler. She's a math teacher.
Congratulations to you.
Thank you.
Jean, maybe you want to give us an update on lead and radon, where we are, where the state finally landed, all of that.
Well, first, the quick update on radon is I think I left everybody with there's a couple of classrooms being retested. They all tested fine, so we have no radon problems in any of our schools. We did have the lead testing done at all our schools during the April break. Had to be during the break because you have to shut the faucets off for like 12 hours before you can do the test. So the good news is that our schools are in very good shape. Even the legislature did finally pass, did it pass or did it disagree?
They agreed.
They agreed on a compromise bill at four parts per billion on lead. And we have the tests back from all the schools except Shelburne, which is just delayed. And nobody is above that level, so we're all below that level. In fact, most of our schools are below three. So that's, that's really good news. Charlotte's got a couple taps that were between three and four actually, and we're going to look at some remediation on those. I don't have Shelburne yet, but when I get them, I'll let the board know. But so far it's, it's where we want to be. We were not expecting problems because apparently unlike most of the state, we do, Bob did do lead testing about five years ago and everything was well below what was then the 15 parts per billion level. So we knew we were in the low single digits and so this is all getting confirmed now. So the good news is we, we aren't above the four parts per billion cutoff. The bad news is that we don't get any state money. So we'll probably, you know, we'll have to fund the taps that we do want to replace out of our own budget. But all good news.
Did you guys do anything to the water when you did the big renovation?
No, I don't think so.
Jean, you mentioned the radon, our testing is fine. Is that because we're doing any remediation of that or are we just lucky and don't have?
We don't have to do any remediation. There was, there were three classrooms that, I think one in Heinsberg and two in Shelburne that in the initial test it would have needed remediation, but they came back and tested them again. Being odd to have one classroom in a building.
Yeah.
And probably got knocked over or something. It came back and retested for radon and nobody, there's no remediation required.
Great, thank you.
For the readings that were in Shelburne, where you said in the report it was due to plumbing work prior to the test. How long ago was the plumbing work?
I think it's still in process. There's a couple of bathrooms in the front office that are being renovated right now. And so.
Staff bathroom.
So the way I read that was that as long as you're doing construction, it's okay to have high lead levels in your water?
No, they tested them and they just didn't get a reading that was consistent, is my understanding.
So do we have a date set for the retesting?
I think it might have already been done. I tried to get Kurt or Chris to give me an answer today, but I didn't get one. So, but remember, five years ago they were fine. So I don't have any reason to think they would not be fine, but I just don't have the data. I didn't want to give you partial data.
But to her question also, five years ago, we didn't take apart a bunch of bathrooms and put them back together again, like we did in Shelburne.
Okay, I'm not sure why that would make it worse.
One of the things that Jean said is that the water had to be shut off 12 hours. If they're doing construction and turning the water on, it could have.
Messed up the test.
Messed up the test.
I get your point. But I'm not super worried. And if there's a problem, we'll remediate it.
Megan, do you have an update on 173 and where we've ended up or not?
Did they attach that?
No, not really.
So this is in the report. Act 173 has become a little bit of a moving target in terms of implementation dates. The advisory group has identified a number of things to their audiences, which is the General Assembly, the State Board and the agency, asking questions about a number of things. Primarily, there's not a lot of clarity coming out of the agency about their interpretation of what will still be required of the schools to report and how much flexibility will actually be given to the, to schools related to the funding, which is pretty much the core purpose of the law was to create flexibility. And there's question about how much flexibility will actually be given. The group has concerns about professional development and whether or not the agency has kind of really clearly outlined what support schools will get. And a number of other things that are kind of in the update. And all of that prompted the group to recommend delay. So there was a House bill recommending just a one-year implementation delay, pushing everything back one year or ahead. And that was going pretty far. The group's understanding was that both House and Senate supported the delay. But at the very last minute, the Senate added Act 46 delay to that bill, having nothing to do with whether or not they thought 173 should be delayed. So that, the assumption is that that would be, that sort of makes that bill dead in the water. That's, that's the understanding. So then even since then, I can't even remember if this is new since I wrote the update. They have taught, they have put some language about delay into the budget bill. House Ed has put that into the budget bill. Still hasn't been voted yet, but there are a couple of different places that they are trying to look at that. For us as Champlain Valley, I mean, I think we will be fine whether they delay or not. For our district, I'm not that concerned. Our preliminary numbers based on what we'll get in the census based model are not showing that we have a big cliff of funding. Depending on the calculation, it might even be favorable. So I'm not that concerned about delay. I'm more concerned about whether or not we're actually going to realize the flexibility that the law intended, which is a big deal because that, that is why we moved to this block grant model is so that we wouldn't need to be sort of letting our funding wag how we use our services.
And are those two tied together? Like can we not go forward with changing, with increasing our flexibility on how we deliver it until that bill gets, is it tied to the funding or is it, what's it tied to?
Well, it's a good question. We, if they delay and therefore don't change the special ed rules, then the rules that create the inflexibility are still in place. Now, there are, I mean, we've managed to be fairly flexible with what we do just based on how we choose to seek reimbursement or not. So, and we use our grant funds very flexibly. We use some portion of idea B that can be fully flexible and we use that to the maximum extent possible. So in other words, we're doing the best we can with a restrictive funding model. And so if it is delayed or something catastrophic happens and they were to, I don't think that that will happen, but if something were to not shift, we'd be okay. But we want, we want full flexibility. I don't think it's going to change how we budget per se. It might change how we use the staff. But at the end of the day, it's really hard to know where we will land in terms of delaying or not delaying.
So, and with the, with 173, we wouldn't be putting in a service plan, would we, for the kids? Because it would have been block money or?
Well, so what the, one of the things the agency isn't clear about is exactly what they're going to ask for related to the service plan. We intend to do basically everything we would do for a service plan because it's an important part of our own budget process. But there are some pieces of data that we wouldn't have to send to the agency. We wouldn't be tied to their very hard, somewhat arbitrary deadline. But what might happen is if it's delayed and it's delayed at the last minute, then the state is going to need a service plan. But right now, most districts are going off the assumption that they don't need one. So then we don't quite know what they would ask for. Would it be the old service plan just, or would it be something new? So we're going to have to react to those types of things.
The service, service planning is so, the staffing for special needs kids is so dependent on very exact planning that as Megan and I've talked about, it probably makes sense to continue that, at least until we're comfortable we have another model where we don't need that. But right now, it's so dependent on the specific needs of a specific child. The thing that's very frustrating is, you know, within my layman's approach with MTSS is that if you can put resources on a child who's not defined as special needs and keep them from failing, you don't get reimbursed by the state for that money. But if that child fails and becomes a, I shouldn't say that, that's not the right words, but you know, needs this, becomes identified as a special needs kid, then we get reimbursement from the state. And that just is just wrong.
Well, and it's exactly what Act 173 was supposed to resolve. And now the question is, and we were supposed to be able to say, here's your, here's your funding. If you want to use some of your funding to support prevention in the context of an MTSS, do that because that's the right thing. But what the agency is, or what the advisory group is concerned is that the agency's definition of flexibility isn't going to actually allow us to do that, which was a core part of the law.
So Megan, part of the challenge is that you'll still need to have to identify children eligible for special education as a category, whereas the 173 would allow you not to categorize children strictly.
Well, in terms of funding, yes. We'll always, special ed is still an entitlement. So we are, we still have an obligation to identify and locate and evaluate kids that we suspect will be eligible. Right, and, and, I mean, that's actually one of the concerns of advocacy groups is that by focusing so much energy on MTSS that we will somehow not then identify kids. Because we'll figure, oh, well, they can get support anyway. We don't need to identify them. That, Act 173 is very specific that, to prevent schools from doing that. And personally, schools can't do that anyway because then we would fail our, our federal requirements to identify kids. You know, we're still going to have a certain percentage of kids who haven't identified disability and need support. But there is a group of kids where it's very difficult to know if they have a disability or if they have had a lack of quick responsive instruction because for many years you can't get that until you're eligible. That's the group of kids that I think we'd be able to serve without going through the process of identification.
And Jeff, might you want to say a little bit about the literacy audit?
Actually, Megan.
Well, Megan then.
Yep. In case you wanted to keep hearing me talk. So there's a lot to unpack about the literacy audit. So I, and I don't want to belabor it, but I'll try to summarize the key points. So you'll remember we, all of our work around MTSS and literacy has focused a lot on our intervention systems and what do we do for kids once they start to struggle. But a lot of things over the past couple of years have caused us to say, we also need to turn our attention to how we teach core literacy in the general ed classroom and how are we doing there? Because that is not disconnected from our intervention system. So in the fall, we contracted with Partnerships for Literacy and Learning, which is a statewide organization, used to be known as Vermont Reads and used to be affiliated with UVM, to conduct an audit of our K four, primarily K four literacy. So they did a combination of observations. They did focus group interviews. They interviewed principals, Jeff and I, all our literacy coordinators, surveyed all of our K four teachers and I think that's the key pieces that they did. And identified, which is in the board report, a lot. So there's a long chart in there about all of their findings. They had, Partnership for Literacy and Learning came to a lead retreat or a lead meeting a couple of months back to kind of present the high level findings. We convened a kind of quick stakeholder group of principals, some lit coordinators, Jeff and I and Elaine, to say, what do we do? There's a lot of information here. There are things that we, that came out of that conversation that Jeff mentioned during his presentation that have to do with kind of aligned curriculum and how are we making sure that all kids, so all second graders have, are exposed to the same things all across our schools? And how do we increase teacher agency was another theme that popped out of that conversation. And that's, that's ensuring that teachers have the expertise they need to make their own decisions about tailoring their instruction and providing intervention when it's needed. But we also sort of recognize that there's a lot more in the. But we also sort of recognized that there's a lot more in the report than just those two areas, and require some leadership around it. And we, an outgrowth of that meeting was, we really need someone in our system whose sole job it is to focus on this implementation, the, you know, bringing together additional people to continue unpacking it, and to move forward those two areas that we identified. So using some of that early intervening grant funding that I just talked about, the flexible funding that I have, we will, will, we posted, and actually, there's some action items related to a district literacy leader, which would be a position whose job it is to oversee this, and to continue the work of unpacking it. You know, other highlights that we were sort of expecting coming out of this audit is that we've spent time and energy, good time and good energy, in our intervention system. We, we have started to shift and make sure that the people intervening with kids who struggle are expert, and our teachers, and our licensed professionals. But what that means is we have a very robust intervention system, and we're very quick to use it. And we don't sort of, you know, we don't pay enough attention to, can we actually intervene in the classroom, instead of sending people immediately to intervention? There are things in here that, that you've kind of probably heard when we talk about the district management group recommendations, things about schedule, how do K4 teachers spend their time, spend their literacy blocks? But I'm going to kind of pause there, because we could, it could be a presentation in and of itself, and we really wanted to kind of get the high-level themes into your hands before anything else.
Can I ask one?
Yeah.
If you're hiring a literacy director based on some funds that you have, is that something that is, when do those funds that you have dry up?
Good question. So the, we, based on what we have, the, these funds at least would go to sustain this position for two years, if not three. Feel very confident, two years, and 80% confident that they could sustain it into three. And we do envision that the position as it's defined is a two-to-three-year position. And then, we would then be making some decisions. Now, what is the position? Is it different than what it was, or does it need to continue? And then we need to be talking about funding. So we would be coming back to the board in advance, long in advance of.
Is it being hired as like a two-year temporary position, or a permanent position?
We haven't even gotten that far yet, have we, Mark?
Yeah.
No, but there is, there is a request for a leave of absence for the person who's taking it, so.
Yes, which is sort of a, because it's an internal, it's an internal hire. So, so just from a natural standpoint, it becomes a year-by-year, simply because that person will ask for a year's leave of absence, ask this board, and then will probably come back in another year and ask for a second year.
Exactly.
Right, the way that we typically do. So that in and of itself makes, doesn't sign us on for something forever. We can still make some adjustments.
So I was going to ask about the leave of absence.
Is it even necessary? I mean, is this position nonrepresented, so that they, you know, would lose seniority, lose, you know, whatever it is?
Well, it's, it's just a protection for the person, if you hire internally, to be able to go back to their old position. So hire into their old position as a one-year, and sort of do that as a one-year position in case this position disappears, they can go back. And that's what they ask us to do.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, absent that, they.
Whether it's even necessary to go through the staff.
Right, right. Yeah, absent that, they would have a position somewhere, but it wouldn't necessarily be in this role that she's vacating right now. So it's protection to be able to do that. And then I would just add that I have a number of titles that I manage, federal grants that support instructional coaching, literacy instruction, and so this could very well morph into something that I support in the future, too. This is just, she has the funds right now, I don't, but we are looking at evolving and making some transitions in a few years from now.
Any other questions on the audit, or on the COLT report? Any question, sorry, questions on the principal's report?
Okay. I had a question on RISE, and obviously, this would, Adam would have to get back to us. But it was about, obviously, there's a lot of incredible offerings and cool things, and just amazing stuff that would never happen in, around a school for kids. But see, that a few of the offerings have fees, and so I was just interested in a little bit more information. My equity radar goes off that, you know, I wish we were doing this in a way that it's literally, I mean, it's, it's obviously giving a lot of kids a lot of opportunity they might not otherwise get, and there's so much here, but that it could be really neutral in terms of fee and access. And that's probably a board, you know, a budget, that may be a budget consideration in the future, as we think about how we're going to fund RISE.
Some consideration given to that. Okay. Kyle and Kate.
Yeah, so May is kind of a slow month for student council. We just elected, well, the school elected new presidents and vice presidents for next year. That will be Beckett, Pintar, and Mia Brumstedt. So May is really devoted to identifying the things that they want to do with student council next year, and their goals for next year, which include the teacher feedback forms. And then, on a whole-school level, last Friday was Grad Challenge Presentation Day, which, I don't know if any of you were ever able to attend, but it was a really great day, and I think went really well, as usual.
Earlier this month, the RAC took down the Black Lives Matters flag, and they had a little short ceremony that the entire school was invited to, if they chose to participate. And they brought that to the cafeteria where it remains right now.
How was the participation level? Do you know?
I was not able to attend when they took it down, but I know when they put it up, it was very high. It was a really cold day, and even then, I think a really high number of kids went out there to support.
Yeah, it was pretty big.
Thanks. Okay. As Brendan promised, Jean will now detail the third quarter of MRR.
Well, right now, our best estimate, our best outlook, is that we'll be, end up favorable to budget by $406,736. I didn't put the cents in there. Don't, please don't take that number for accuracy, just, just where the math ended up. The new and notable for this quarter, I guess, is that we are running a little high on the HRA usage, which I kind of flagged last time as possible. So we put, so we've included $100,000 over budget on the HRA usage. This is our, remember, just keep in mind, this is our first full fiscal year with the HRA, so I don't really know. We're just trying to take a, an estimate of quarter-by-quarter where we are. Food service is a little bit at risk. Talk about RISE, we just don't, we found out that a lot of kids are not on campus during those two weeks, and that lunch hour is only going to be an hour instead of more extended, and there's no breakfast service, and we still have to pay all our cafeteria workers. So we don't know, but it could be that that'll be a little worse on the cafeteria forecast. That's sort of what's new and different. Any questions?
I think next year, RISE should do a food truck, and they could make up their shortages.
I didn't see an extra sheet.
Yeah.
I thought there was a.
Unless it's staffed by the employees that were paying anyway, it's not going to help.
We can figure this out. Is anyone going to, by the way.
Bonnie, I am so on Twitter now. Thank you for all of those highlights. But do you want to just say anything quickly about the listening session that I found out over Twitter? Thank you, Bonnie.
Thank you. Well, so as you know, with the food service, we've been working with this Vermont School Nutrition Leadership Team consultants, and they are, they've been hosting a series of listening sessions internally. And tomorrow night, we have one with, that the community's invited to come to, here in room 140. So I'm hoping to, they're, pull together all of the input, and they've given us some recommendations, but now they're looking, just deep dive a little bit more on what the recommendations would be. And unfortunately, the only day we could schedule it, of course, is Williston Center, it's like finding a day in May that you can have anything happen when nothing's going on. So Williston will make an extra outreach effort to make sure that they have an opportunity to, I mean, I'm happy to meet with anybody who, in Williston, who wants to do that, but we're also going to send out a survey, you know, after tomorrow night. We didn't want to send it out ahead, because we really want people to come and talk, but after tomorrow night, we'll send out a survey to people who couldn't attend.
Have you done our SVP?
Yeah.
Do you know which people will show up?
I have about 25 people right now signed up.
I'll come to a special Williston.
Okay, there you go.
I would just jump on that Lind's side about Twitter.
But for those of you who are, are on Facebook, I hope that you're following our page, because that's part of you staying informed about what's happening in our schools. So, for example, last week, there was a meeting for the day at Shelburne Farms, and we had kindergartners from our schools as the keynote. And there's an adorable photo. So things like that, we're sharing via our blog and Facebook page, so I hope that all of you are following along.
5.7 IFR.
Embedded in this packet is the integrated field review. It starts with that cover right there. You don't have to go to it, but I'm going to describe what it, how to read it. At the request of the Indicators Committee, I created a couple of cheat sheets at the beginning of it. I'm going to just talk a little bit about how it's organized. There are five domains, the education quality standards, and then with each, within each standard, there are four subdomains. And what the group did, they visited in January, there's a list of everybody who visited here, of educators, I'm sorry, teachers, administrators, and AOE members, visited all of our schools and provided feedback. And it's organized underneath each subdomain, there's a list of findings, and then at the bottom of the page, for the category, for the domain, they list commendations and then recommendations. And so what you will see in the cheat sheets, the first two pages, is a template that summarizes just the commendations and recommendations for each, with a status update that I put in there to basically say, this is where, this is what, these are some of the things we currently have in place that address, addresses that particular domain. I did not get into, here's how we think we might respond, and here's what we're going to do next, because it's not just my decision to make, A. B, we have our own visiting team, because we had our own team go out to all these different places. They're meeting in two days from now to look at this report, and then to share their takeaways from all their visits, come up with some of our own recommendations, and then we can proceed on with taking it to lead and start really processing this information with those experiences. So I would say that, you know, we didn't want to have to bog you down with trying to analyze it all right now. It's here, if you get a chance to read it between now and the retreat, I do, like I said earlier, we will be trying to make some connections between the two, and actually also with the Continuous Improvement Plan, which you saw earlier in the year.
I think that this chart at the beginning.
Yeah.
Is really helpful to kind of explain how it all.
Yes, and that's actually a page or two before.
Goes together.
Lynn is right, there's, let me look, it looks like this. And that details all the accountability measures that exist, from the state down to, well, actually, it's all, they're all state measures, except for HSA, which is a national measure.
Any questions? Thank you. We are now on to innovation grants, 5.8.
So this is a summary. There was a little over one-page Q and A in your report that kind of established, you know, how many grants were requested, how many were funded, what the breakdowns were, and the work of the design team that has been working all year, even as we've been funding these, working to establish a protocol going forward, a form that people would fill out, and kind of establishing parameters. So I hope you all had a chance to look at that. We had requests, it's right on that page, $112,000 worth of requests, and we funded $58,000, a little over $58,000. I'm just going to share three of them, I think, or maybe four, that, just to give you an idea of some of the innovative things that are going on. So one of them is at Charlotte Central School, there's an augmented reality, virtual reality focus. That funded equipment to do that work. Here are just some of the things that are going on down there. So the sixth graders visited the International Space Station in real time, and several of us around the table went down and watched this, as they were having an interaction with the astronaut in the space station. Fourth graders did a virtual reality tour of geology of the national parks as part of their unit on plate tectonics. Seventh and eighth graders toured various places of worship as part of a unit on world religions. Sixth graders toured national monuments in Washington, DC, in preparation for them to design their own monuments as part of a cultural historical event unit. And they did a 360 tour in real time of the Murdo Station in Antarctica, fifth graders. So that, this is Alan Miller, who is doing this work, and he calls that part of it the consumption part. You go out there and you are looking at things that already exist. And so a second part of this pilot is the creation aspect, kids developing things that other people could come and see. So one of the things that the committee really liked about this, and it says in here, but I'm going to remind you, the process is it comes to me, I share it with COLT, I bring it to a, this year, a design team of the lead team, but there will always, even in the future, there will be a group there that I would bring it to, get input and come back to the COLT before we decide one way or the other, right? So one of the things we loved about this one is that this starts in Charlotte, but part of the plan is to bring it out, right, to other schools. So like, they're doing that work there, but it has the opportunity to be replicated other places. So that was one that we thought was pretty cool. Vicki Nelson in Heinsburg, doing, I think she calls HCS Seed, and that is the development of therapeutic play-based space for our youngest, most vulnerable kids. So that purchased things like Legos, puppets, a play kitchen, compassion cards, books about trauma and resilience, arts and crafts, and built into this one is training for teachers about how do you deal with kids who are dysreguished. Do you want to add anything to that? I'm seeing you nod.
No, I think you captured it exactly, but it's very.
So again, what we liked about this is, like, here's somebody who's so enthusiastic about this, and going to do it in Heinsburg first, but it's, you could replicate this, you know, like, if it's successful, we move forward with that. Art installation in Williston. So that is a group of art teachers, the tech ed teacher, one of their ELL teachers, coming together and developing a group art project that will be installed at Williston Central School. And again, well, we like the idea of the interdisciplinary part of this, working with an artist. They have an artist who has grandchildren in the school, who will be doing this work. We like that it was interdisciplinary, and also that it's something that you could say, okay, it would be great if we had on a four, five-year cycle, art installations in each of our schools. Maybe it wouldn't happen every year, because I can tell, just from the update they gave me, it's a lot of work. So we, I'm just going to take a break here and say, we funded these rolling funding, right? So it wasn't like you have to have it in by October 1, and people throw stuff in just because there's the deadline. So we decided, no, it could always be, we'd just be paying attention to how much money we have. And really, there's a lot of planning that goes into all of this, especially when you get into, like, you've got, you know, I think it's, in this particular one, eight teachers that are working on this. So it'll be next year that it will happen. So we funded it this year, but it will really happen next year. So we're going to have to figure that part out, just how the funding goes. And the last one that I wanted to share with you is the CVSD Read Project. And again, that's something that, you know, like, it got funded this year. got funded this year, planning by a huge group of people who came to the LEAD team two weeks ago and shared the work that they were doing around, you know, just determining the theme first, determining how do you kick it off, and then extraordinary amounts of work around the celebration, and how do you get, like, all the kids. So all of the kids who are in this Read, whether they read the book or not, are gonna be here at C V U while school's in session. With Jeff, I would love for you to, like, maybe just share some of the particulars about what that day looks like.
Yeah, one of the authors coming to get the keynote, and we have the Clumby Family Farm coming to lead several workshops. We have the Justice Center coming to lead workshops. We have many art teachers doing an art project with all the students. They have a very intricate plan about how to, how to switch all the students and how to group all the students. They've done remarkable work, the, this particular committee. They're really passionate about it. But yeah, it's a day-long celebration where you'll have ninth graders with fourth graders doing some projects together, doing some learning together. And also, for the ninth graders who'll be reading Marsh by John Lewis, two or three weeks later, John Lewis comes to the Flynn, and we've got first come, first served because of this project.
That's great.
So we'll actually be able to meet and hear from two of the authors. We're excited about it. And again, kudos to some folks who put in so much time and effort into this.
So in Shelburne, we have a project.
It was actually one of the first ones that we funded of providing active, engaged movement before school starts for, we hope, the kids who need it the most. And I've seen a couple of videos, they've sent me videos of that. So that's, that's also, again, something that we can replicate if we find. So they're keeping data on that. Like, how are these kids doing, the ones who are participating in this, in their classrooms, both behaviorally, socially, and as well as academically. So we've asked each one of the people that we've awarded a grant to, to be ready to get up at convocation and share with their colleagues in just a few minutes, or like, not even, one or two minutes, here's what my project was, here's what's, where I am with it, and here are the results so far, to let everybody, it's a way to advertise for everyone, this is an opportunity for you to put your creative thinking caps on and think about how we might be innovative. So, any questions?
I might have one, and probably you have this already in place. Have you thought about, like, a scoring scale? Because as we continue to grow, you know, it would be good to have some kind of scoring scale, like, how many people, vulnerable people are we serving? Like, of course, now we'll have data, like, show us, you know, your results, you know, how we taught other people, or how many kids are we going to impact, something that, you know, that you can move forward. And so this is how we made our decisions.
Yeah.
Because I, I trust that the decisions were made, you know.
I think that we talked about all of that, but we didn't actually have, you know, a piece of paper where we were, like, putting numbers down.
Well, and I, and I think one of the hard things to do, because I don't want to leave you the impression that that's the intent, is that the LEAD group that talked about it said, this is innovation. If we knew what it looked like, it wouldn't be innovative, right? So, so putting any kind of boxes, like, it has to be fit in this box, they felt was very limiting. So I think this first year was a learning year, and I think maybe we'll see how it goes next year, but I, I, I'm a data person, I like boxes, I like number series, but I think that this, I was kinda sold on the fact that if you want something that's truly innovative, it's not gonna fit in a nice box.
That's what I'm thinking, that as we continue to grow this innovation, you know, project, or how we move forward, it's good to have those numbers. And, and every project is going to be unique, right, no doubt. But I think having, like, one thing we want, we would like to see that it's going to impact a number of kids, we are able to spread it out to all other schools, something in that line. So there will be some things that, at least, we know that, you know, we can put in those boxes, and then there will be something that, hey, this is an extra, you know, check mark.
And I thought, the thing you just mentioned, I did wanna say, because Elaine mentioned several times, we can share this with other schools, move it to other schools. That was actually a really important discussion in assessing these, because if, for instance, the virtual reality setup, the goggles and the camera and the training, they had a plan where it didn't say, like, well, we needed this much money, and now every school is gonna need that much money. Their plan was, and we can share this hardware and our expertise through the schools. And the same thing with the art installation, it wasn't like, well, every year, next year, everybody's gonna need this amount of money so that we all have art. It's like, no, maybe this would be a great thing to have every fourth year, and so we can, you know, or fifth year, so that we can move this around. So, there was some, a lot of discussion around the equity sustainability when we awarded these.
Is the art installation for W C S similar to the art installation that A B S did this year?
It's the same idea.
That was funded, that was funded by F A P.
Right. It's that idea.
I just wanted to tag onto Barbara's comment and request for data. I don't know if you have any plan. You say that you're building a protocol for how to apply. In the future, will there be protocol on reporting out at the end? So that, a common template, perhaps?
You mean, reporting out for
How did it go?
At convocation?
Uh, no, I mean, a general report that goes to-
I think it would be really general. That's the thing, they're very, very different, right?
Well, of, of course, it's gonna be different, but I, I think there is a lot of value to some commonality. I mean, it's like, if you're doing a grant, most grants require some kind of evaluation piece. To me, this is a grant and should probably follow similar protocol. What's the plan for letting us figure out, how did it go?
Well, and to that point, I, I was, to that point, I love hearing the success stories, but, you know, they always say you learn, learn more from a loss than you do from a win.
I was thinking about too, like, why did this fail, right?
Yeah.
Like, maybe we didn't-
Well, we're not there yet, though.
We haven't failed.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, exactly.
Like, did this program fail because, like, whatever? But that's learning, you're right.
Yeah. Failure is, I mean, it shouldn't be that only things that are absolutely going to succeed are funded, because failure is part of learning.
No, frankly, failure is innovation.
Right.
If any doubt is-
So I don't think you need to worry too much about that, because that's definitely the tack we were taking.
Yeah, great.
And that's the argument we were making, that if it's innovative, we really don't know, right?
And so I, I just wanna reiterate my advocacy and support for some kind of data reporting, and data qualitative and quantitative. Thank you.
I think this is a new, new program that I think a lot of time, and I think you and discussing it with tons of different people, and that we have to make sure that we give it an opportunity to succeed. You know, I, I'm a data guy too, and I wanna see data, but I think we have to be prepared to maybe not see data for the first two or three years while we're developing this. But we can look at other options to get feedback, such as maybe, as a presentation, have each, each group have fifteen minutes, and they could talk to us about it. And then we can use that information to try to develop data sets where it can become more, more automated. But I think for us to ask right now, saying that we need to check the box for this type of program would be detrimental to the program, because it would almost persuade people not to apply for these, this, this grant if they knew that they had to have, because you don't want them to be afraid to fail.
So, just, just to make up, and I don't know if I was misunderstood, but it's more for their team that evaluates these applications, because we know there are some common, you know, common elements that you're looking at, and just to have those numbers, like, how many people are they serving? So that's all right. If they're not serving, like, more than a hundred, that's maybe a no. And maybe as you give them feedback to this, to their team that applied for the, for the fund, you can let them know that this is the reason why, because as they go back, they can come back a couple of years after, and, and this is not now, I'm just thinking, like, as we continue to grow this.
Yeah. So we, we did have to do that. You know, there was a hundred and twelve, a hundred and twelve thousand, or almost a hundred and thirteen thousand dollars worth of requests, and we only funded fifty-eight and change.
Which is about, I think-
And I wrote, and I wrote a letter to every single person that didn't get it and said specifically why. Because we were, we were learning it as we went along. That was the beauty of bringing it to COLT and hearing, what do you guys think about this? And then bringing it to the LEAD design team that included Jean, myself, and Adam, and Jackie, and Sarah Crum, so a mixed group of people, and say, what do you think about it? And then seeing if we were reaching consensus, because we were making the rules at that point. So one of the early rules was, we're not funding things that should be in the regular ed budget. So I'll give a really good example. Somebody asked for ukuleles for a music program, and we were like, shouldn't that be part of the music program? It is in several schools. And guess what? You know what? They're gonna get those ukuleles next year, but not as an innovation fund. So that's the kind of thing that we were teasing out and having really robust discussions, like, in three different venues about the same grants.
And I, and I think what I'm hearing Barbara say is that, and I'm, I'm just thinking, if I was someone who was trying to make access from the Innovation Fund, is athletes now have these initial conversations, and that maybe at some point we get to a point where there's at least some kind of, I don't know, scale or something, where when someone's applying for it, they'll have a sense of what you're looking for, and they should be making sure
Right.
that this could be a good idea, or, oh, no, this isn't probably gonna be an Innovation Fund, it's more of this, just so that people have kind of an idea of what lens you're looking through, like, what, what you're-
Right. And in a way, that's why we're asking them to stand up at convocation, so that, so that people sitting there going like, oh, I have an idea that fits into that category. And they're different enough so that people can start thinking creatively about different things. But that's exactly what we're trying to figure out. Angela, did you-
Well, I was, I guess what I was gonna say is more relevant, like, three comments ago, that I was gonna say that, I guess, I think the number I would be most interested in is just, like, how many people apply next year.
Right.
You know, I'd be more interested in how it's affecting teachers than how it's affecting kids in the beginning, because I love the idea of this as something that can inspire teachers to think outside of the boxes they've been put in, and that, you know, education tends to come packaged in. So I'm really excited about this for that reason, and, and for that reason, I'd be interested in seeing fewer parameters, and not fewer than, it sounds like the right number of parameters maybe exists, maybe that number is slightly above zero, but not really, you know, to, because you have to have-
Right. Well, in a way, I think that is why, when we were coming down to the, you know, the last couple meetings where we were saying, okay, like, we're ready to put this down on paper, at one point, somebody said, well, Elaine, you could just do this. And I'm like, I don't want to. Not because I mind being the person who says yes or no, but because I realized, like, we were so informed by the conversations that were going on, and we were figuring out, like, how to incent people to apply for things, and also figuring out how to let people know in a nice way that this is what it's not, right? This isn't to backfill a budget shortfall.
But I hear two things. One is, I'm sorry, is, one is the discussion around whether or not we wanna have parameters around communicating what is likely to be accepted or valued. And then the other one is around outcomes. So I'm hearing two different things.
I'm not a data person, a story person. I think this is a wonderful story. I second, you know, exactly what you're saying, Angela, but I also think it's a communication story for us as a district too, because a lot of the things you were talking about, I hear, obviously, innovation, you know, creativity, teacher fashion, and a lot of coordination among schools, and, and becoming a more cohesive consolidated district. Like, I think it's a good story around consolidation too.
And though it isn't explicitly put here as a criteria, it sounds like sort of the back of everybody's head, and there became, is this something that's broader than just one school, or maybe bring schools together, or could be shared, and, you know, whether that needs to be formal or not, I, I don't know, but I think that the tone of that is really, it's really exciting for us. And, and, and it's innovative, and it's unique, and it's, it's a testament to consolidation.
And it comes back to one of the equity things that I think we definitely struggle with the central office, I think as a district we do, is you don't wanna say, you can only do this, Charlotte, if I can afford to do it in all the schools, because that's not right either.
Right.
But then you can also get yourself in a trap where you offer something, if one school comes up with an awesome thing that you really wanna replicate, you now have to figure out what it's gonna displace in the budget so that you can do more of it. And so, it's a little, it's a little, so I'd say, like, exactly what you're saying, is that it's kind of a, it's a consideration.
Right.
Is this something that can be experienced?
Not just a binary, that it's that you can only do it in that school, but is there, does, is it something that might have potential in another building? We're not saying every school's gonna have to have B R equipment or something, but is, is your vision about our district, or about your school, and there's a place for both, but?
So, if I'm recalling correctly, I think there'll be more discussion around the innovation grants, because we were talking about doing two-year cycles. This is more finance committee, I think, when we talked about it around the budget, and how that was all gonna work, so.
Well, I think, I mean, the way you would see it coming back in the budget is that, given some of these things that did not spend all their money, and we want them to continue, some of the hundred thousand dollars that we, you, you did approve for next year's budget is sort of already consumed.
Right.
So I would probably come and show you that data at some point, to say, these are the ones, and then this is the addition. Now we have seventy-five left, and we've rolled it out to the staff, and we're starting to get, that, that would be what you see. And then, of course, in the budget cycle, where you'd need to decide if that's something you'd like to continue as a program.
So this'll come back, this'll be back on the work plan next year, is I guess what I'm trying to, to get to.
This is one of the comments about the word data. A program evaluation does not rely strictly on numbers, and so any kind of reporting out, when, when I use the word data, I'm not meaning just numbers, I'm meaning that there's some kind of standardized format for reporting out, some kind of program evaluation.
Okay. Thank you, that was all very helpful.
Thank you. Okay. Now, we're on to six-point-oh discussion matters, six-point-one policy. We have the long-awaited flag policy. We've waited two months for that. That's pretty fast track.
Yeah?
I'm impressed. So, go for it.
Well, I mean, the policy was, we, we drafted it, some conversation. Basically, the policy comes out as it's treating the flagpole as government speech. It's owned and controlled by the school, and I think the way the policy has come out is it's sort of allows us to align any sort of expression through the use of the flag with the vision and mission of the school district. I think the biggest fear that I had with this policy was the unknown, and what would happen with respect to legal action and potential requests, and I think that this was a good balance of, of giving people the opportunity to do it, as long as it aligned with the mission of the school.
Can you just let us, remind us, who is, who made up the committee that developed this, and did it go through legal review? Have we had it go through legal review?
So it was, it was Mark, and Russ, and myself, and Colleen, and Ray. Adam took part.
Mark, Jeff.
And Jeff, right, Jeff.
This is Mark.
Okay.
Legal review in the beginning. I have, so I, I did enough research to satisfy, satisfy myself that this was close, and if it needs to be tweaked, we can look at it again. I am gonna send it through one more time.
Okay.
After we kind of finalized our line.
But you also got an opinion from, I forget his name.
Chris.
Yeah. Former legal-
Did you use or take language from an existing policy, or is this language, you did?
Yeah, Mark did, yes.
And which existed?
Mark did a good job of-
Yeah. Four or five different policies.
School policies?
School policies. School policies, university policies, yes.
So is this open question, Tab?
Yeah.
I was wondering why your, why the policy only pertains to C V U, and that request won't be considered from the other schools in the district?
So, we got a lot of questions about that, and I think if there's, you know, I myself have opinions on, like, being apprehensive about opening it up to middle school, and I guess the, what I wanted to do was just hold it to C V U as we introduced this, and see how it goes, and sort of walk down that path, and see if there's anything that we didn't anticipate, which would be a problem with the policy in a subset, which would be the high school, which would be the, you know, the most vocal group that we've had for this type of issue in the recent past. They're the ones, only ones who've come to us. for this type of issue in the recent past, the only ones who've come to us.
Is it?
Second consideration that people had was, we don't have two flagpoles in a lot of the middle schools, so we didn't want to single it out on other things.
And honestly, some of the feedback that we got from the community, when we had the whole discussion about the Black Lives Matter flag, there was, people's concerns were ameliorated, is that the right word? When they found out that that flag wouldn't be on the same flagpole as the American flag, and so, in my mind, it seems like, you know, if that appeased people, then that is a good thing, and I don't want to start opening a can of worms by putting everything on one flagpole.
What about installing second flagpoles?
Well, if money was no object, we would do that, but we'd just have to visit that at the time. And that's why, walk before we can run with the first year of the policy.
There's another aspect to it, and, you know, the point number five in there is, perhaps, it's not required, but, you know, a piece about student support, and when you've got K to eight buildings, and, you know, obviously very different degrees of maturity in the different grades, you know, concerns about how that plays out in a school where you've got kindergartners who may or may not be in a position to, you know, make inform, or have informed opinions about some of these matters, so that's a part of it as well. I mean, it's not, it's not just about whether or not we've got flagpoles.
No, I know. I think it makes a lot of assumptions about the students, though, inherently.
What, did you get feedback on that from Susan and? We're on. Well, I assume Adam, because he, it affects him directly, well, affects both of them. But did, what was Susan's opinion about not having middle school kids?
Well, so, I think she would echo sort of what Wes just said, it's not just middle school kids, we're dealing with middle school, whatever it's getting, and where do you draw that line as far as student organizations? You know, this policy's really written, a flag comes up from a student organization to a principal, through student government-type structure. And where that exists in a sixth, seventh grade, where, where kids are. So, I think the committee, and I'm now speaking for the committee, so.
Correct.
Yeah, I know. Sort of came to the conclusion that, for two reasons, the one that Dave laid out, sort of, policy isn't written in stone, it can always be revisited, after we try it out at the high school. Again, we've had it, only happened sort of once at this point in time, and see if it becomes a bigger deal. And then also, thinking of the age of the students.
I just would like to add that the committee spent a lot, the policy committee spent a lot of time on this very question about opening it up to middle level. I was convinced that, just to go with CBU, because I had that same question at first, I really am an advocate for giving voice to middle-level kids. But Ray might have said on the committee, something to the effect of, you know, it's not closed, if they want to advocate for it, they can come back. I don't know, you want to speak to that, Ray?
Well, yeah, it's, you know, this is not written in stone, the policy can be changed if the students are willing to work for it.
Another key component here is that, again, flagpoles are expensive, and if we're gonna walk around and put, you know, flagpoles at all of our schools, it wouldn't happen in one year. If the board decided we wanted to do that, to roll this out to our lower schools, and Jean, if I'm stepping over my bounds of what I should say, it'll stop me, but to say we're gonna go and sell six flagpoles, that would be a hefty price when we have other competing priorities around security and such that we should be spending our money on. So again, I think it's a policy we can revisit, policies are made to be developed, but, you know, there's just a lot of factors to consider when rolling out to those schools.
Go. Just a couple questions. Currently, how many CDSD policies do we have that single out CBU explicitly?
I can't think of one off the top of my head.
So, pretty much when we make a policy, it's for our district. Okay. And then, two, for a flagpole, for flying the American flag, really, the only rule is, right, that you can't fly a flag higher than the American flag, so there's really no legal issue of flying any other flag below a US flag, right? So it doesn't really?
It's US, state, and then.
Right. But I mean, as long as we follow, like, federal-state protocol, you can fly flags all the way up a flagpole, as long as it's federal, state, whatever flag is allowed.
Until you have to fly a flag that happens.
Exactly. So, and then, but that's a different question. So that goes to, we don't necessarily need the expense of other poles, because the poles are the property, right? I'm just thinking, what, I'm kind of just troubleshooting, because it's, we're thinking about policy, and changing policy, even to get a flag up a pole, took a year and a half. So to get the flag up a pole again and change the policy, half the kids might be graduated. What happens, especially in the middle school, like, for example, at Williston Central School, they are organizing, and I'm thinking of some youth organizations that just might like to fly their flag. So, I guess I'm a little hesitant to vote, or to endorse something that's strictly looking at CBU. And I'm thinking specifically of the LGBTQ+ community, and the group is more in-depth at Williston Central School. So, I'd hate to say to those group of kids that are having pride parades all over the hallways at Williston Central School, that, oh, that won't be an option for you. So.
I agree.
I don't really know if this is that helpful, but.
After spending a lot of time at Williston Central School for a book fair, because I don't, I don't actually come in contact with these kiddos, like, that age group a lot, I would say that a lot of the seventh and eighth graders that I spoke to, I could imagine them having, maybe not, maybe the conversation, if they came in front of us, wouldn't be as eloquent or as put together, but I think that the deep feeling and what they would express to us would be as thought, like, they would put as much time and thought into it as we saw with RAC. And I also don't, I don't know that I could, I necessarily support the idea of excluding middle schoolers, because I do think that they also could, could feel strongly, strongly, and be able to put together a well-thought-out proposal that, that I think that our schools would want to support.
I just want to reinforce, another, you know, we have to listen to our community, that's not just what we want. And I feel like we heard it loud and clear when the community was here, that they didn't want to see any club flags on the same pole as the United States flag. At least, that's how I felt, and how, you know, I heard that over and over again.
Erin, did you?
To use this opportunity, because it's tangentially related to something I totally missed earlier, and just occurred to me as we're talking about, like, maturity in middle school students, and I would agree and support that I want them to have voice, and if there comes a time, a group is setting where they have the will to try to initiate something, I wouldn't want our policies to close that down. And then I realized I missed earlier, when we were talking about the Colt Report, the run, hide, fight training, and that there will be, next year during the school year, age-appropriate drills focusing on decision-making, and an actual physical run drill and reunification, and then I'm thinking, like, well, is that our middle school students? Is that age-appropriate? Or that, like, if, I have big concerns about involving students in those drills, and then I have, like, if we're gonna say that we're gonna involve them in that kind of adult experience and thinking in the world, and drill, then I hope they organize and raise the never-again flag. I mean, I just, that seems contradictory, that, but I don't know what age-appropriate is, and again, I, it's my mistake, I didn't raise that at the right time on the agenda, but.
But to, just because it's one thing I haven't thought about, because I haven't been in this conversation, but you can do age-appropriate drills, because they can be different by lower house, upper house, or whatever, but you have one flagpole, so you can have your seventh and eighth graders, and I'm totally with you, I don't think anybody would argue that if you had a clear middle school, this would be a much easier decision, but you're putting a flagpole up for an entire K-8 program, and only the seventh and eighth graders are making the decision, that's really tricky, and I haven't thought about it that hard, but the run, hide, fight, we know how to do, age appropriately, a little different.
Well, I have huge questions about that, I think I still have to bring for it in another meeting, but.
Listen, I didn't object to, I guess I'm just looking. For clarification on the word appropriate. If it's something is, if something is appropriate to fly in public view, what makes it inappropriate to fly in public view somewhere else?
So, if I think back to the students who presented, when RAC came and presented, they really wanted the flagpole up to show that the CBU community supports the Black Lives Matter, and they were using that, and correct me if I'm wrong, as a way to bring the dialogue, to start the dialogue within CBU. And I guess I have a hard time understanding how you're gonna start a dialogue in K-8 about Black Lives Matters without the support of the entire administration at that school, and the teachers. And so, I think before I would approve a policy that said that this should happen at all of our schools, I can see that happening at CBU, because I think there is a, there's a developmental level, and there's a maturity level. I have a hard time envisioning how that would happen at the K-8s, and so I don't think I could approve a policy unless I had the backing of the K-8 administration, who was willing to take on that conversation with those, with those kids.
But that's, but that's in the policy.
They have to form a group, they have to petition, they have to come before the board, I mean, that's.
No, 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 what I'm saying is, the, it's the after, right? It's just a symbol, flying the flag is the symbol, and it's meant to encourage a deeper conversation within the school. So I would like to know that the K-8 administration was willing, if they're gonna, if we're gonna say, okay, you're gonna fly this flag, and you're gonna then start this conversation, is that something that they want to do at the K-8 level?
Then I would argue that I think we would, at the very, at the very least, we would have to change the purpose of the policy as it's written, because the purpose of the policy is the board intends to establish a policy and provide procedural guidance on requests from student organizations to use flagpoles to display flags on Champlain Valley School District property. And I think that, by the fact that it even says that it has to be a student group, I don't even think we have to say middle schoolers. I don't, I don't see that second and third graders are making school groups that are then gonna have a flag that represents them. I, I mean, if the purpose is to fly a flag so then a deeper conversation, and I think that that would be, have to become part of our purpose, if that makes sense. I, I don't know.
So, the way I, what I was hearing from you is that the way we were interpreting our purpose was to give voice to student groups, and therefore, that conversation about whether it's appropriate for kindergartners, that's moot, because it's a student.
Right. Exactly.
I think that's what I heard from you.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for wording much better than what I was saying.
The work of the Common Read, obviously, is not explicitly by any means Black Lives Matter Common Read, but it's, like, real world, this is the world we live in, these are the challenges, these are our blind spots and our biases, at down to a fourth-grade level, Common Read, and so, I guess I can see pedagogically there being connections to curriculum discussions, experiences for students, so we're, we're going to make some connections and experiences through this Common Read, given the titles I've seen in the list of what students are reading, again, as young as my will-be fourth grader.
I think also, you know, at the age-appropriate, developmentally appropriate. Right. Level, so those conversations can be had at every age level, and so I hear what you're saying about you'd want buy-in, to know that there'd be support, administrative support. But I think there's something in the policy about it being the principal's decision, well, the principal of CBU, so, in consultation with the board, but if that could apply to the other principals, then I would think that that would signify buy-in on the administration's part.
We have, you know, policies at CBU that allow the upperclassmen to leave for lunch. We recognize, right, we do, we don't. So, we recognize their maturity level, that they're gonna leave for lunch, and be safe, and make the right decisions out of the community. We're not letting our freshmen or our eighth graders leave the campus, because we recognize that they don't have the maturity level to potentially do that on their own. So, we already have policies in place that recognizes, in essence, the different maturity levels of our grades. And when you're allowing a group of kids, say, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, to make a decision for an entire school, to do something, you're essentially saying that these younger kids who are not able to contribute to the decision are going to be forced into, you know, whatever meaning that that flag might have. So I really feel that having a K to eight, you know, you can't, you, you almost can't exclude the younger kids, but it's tough, because the younger kids, in theory, don't understand enough of that decision.
I have two thoughts. The first thought is that I don't think that the sixth, seventh, and eighth graders would be making a decision for the entire school, because I, I think that if, if we accept it and adopted the policy, as it mostly is written, in that it would be students that are part of a school organization, and they are getting the approval of the principal in conjunction with the, with the board, I really think that the person who's making the decision is the principal slash the board, but it's also, it's a. What?
You have that petition, don't you have the group of kids signing that?
Well, but, so what I was gonna say is that, like, the Black Lives Matter flag, not every student at this school wanted the Black Lives Matter flag to be raised, that was one group, and there are other groups that could raise flags that, that other students aren't going to identify with, and may not want up there, but, but if it is approved, it's okay. I think, I think that, that lower children that are K for second grade, maybe they're not part of an organization, or maybe they would be, I don't know. But I also think that we, as a district, when RAC came in here and talked about wanting to raise the Black Lives Matter flag, it was talking about changing the conversation in our district, in our schools, and I don't think it was solely for CBU. I think that that is talking about all of our schools, and so, if there were a group of students, and I don't know what their ages would be, but at Williston Central School, or at Shelburne, or in Heinsburg, or in Charlotte, who felt strongly that they wanted to raise the Black Lives Matter flag, or they wanted to raise an, like, an LGBTQ+ flag, for whatever reason, I, I would like to see that there is an avenue for them to at least petition and request it, rather than having a policy that doesn't allow, doesn't allow for that.
So, I need to say something, but I just wanted to chime in here. So, a lot of times it's hard to be a board member, because I'm just a board member who lives in Shelburne, and sits here, and tries to weigh in on different opinions. I'm not an educator, and we're lucky to have educators who are board members, because they bring a perspective that is totally different. What I used to do when I was a younger board member was I'd tell these great stories about my kids, and I tried not to do that, but I think when we were working on this policy, it was right around Earth Day, and something came out about how, well, it was part of the summary report of the UN Climate Report, I shared this with you, where kids in Shelburne Middle School all were told that, you know, among their peer groups, that the world was gonna end in 12 years because of climate change. And the difference in how my sixth grader and my eighth grader processed and evaluated that information was kind of shocking to me. And I started to think, like, well, how is that gonna happen if, you know, if the difference between my sixth grader and my eighth grader is. difference between my sixth grader and my eighth grader is exponential or quadratic, then what is it going to be like for a third or a fourth grader? I really became concerned with that. I sort of dislike when personal opinions get brought into policies and we have these great political debates that we hear about on the news, but like, this is the one time where I really brought some personal knowledge to this and the fear of how my kids evaluated this information without having the ability to truly go through and evaluate everything scientifically, and that's why I offered, let's walk and before we run. I don't dispute that middle schoolers have the opinions and, and the ability to think because at middle school graduation, we always have these five kids speak, and we're just like, holy cow, these kids are great, they're unbelievable, and they're funny. And, but I think also personally that there's some things you have to wait for, and I kind of feel like the amount of emotion that was around the raising of the Black Lives Matter flag, did, the Black Lives Matter flag was a wonderful idea, and I totally support that it came to the board. I didn't like the reaction of the public in general and how things sort of played out relative to other things that have come before this board. And so that's why I wanted to, I advocated for limiting this to just the high school. And also personally, I feel like there are certain things maybe you shouldn't have until you're in ninth grade, and I think raising a flag is one of them. That's my opinion, couched with a conservative risk assessment of why we should contain this to the high school. That's what I think.
I think it's a freedom of speech issue, and I think you're curtailing a group of kids' freedom of speech based on our lack of resources. And I get what you mean. I'll give you my son's experience, who's not a son, who's non-binary, and who is walking through the halls today and who also is in fifth grade, and they are talking about these things.
I'm not saying that they're not supposed to talk about it, and I'm not saying that your son isn't.
But it's not, it's, to me, it's completely different than the horrifying end of the world and non-scientific information. So I respect what you're saying, but I, I, I believe in our schools today, there's so many messages, and to your point about run, risk, hide, like, I mean, and I do, and I'll give you a personal, my son, who would just as soon come and say, hey, let's fly this flag up the flag pole, because I guarantee that, the kid will be sitting here next year. So I'm just preempting the conversation we're going to have about the policy, is the same kid that will say, I'm not going to the high school dance because that's where they shoot people, because that, in their mind, that's how they compartmentalized high school shootings. It doesn't happen in grade school, it happens at high school dances. So I get, I get what you mean about developmentally, but there's a, but I don't think that, to me, is not what this conversation is about.
But I think the, you said freedom of speech, and I think that's exactly my concern about curtailing it is because we're, we've done a first pass of the legal risks of this, and I think like if we, if we test this in a smaller pool, while we see how strong the policy is and if there are unanticipated results, we can limit the risks of the school district by, by doing this. And, and that is sort of my, sort of compromise to rolling this out, and by no means, at any time did we say we were never going to change this. We just said we wanted to evaluate it and limit it at this time. Russ?
You know, as a way forward here, the Policy Committee, you know, did the best we could, came up with this policy, this is our recommendation to the board. I think at this point, we have a couple of options. We could go back as a Policy Committee and try to re-craft it, or we can take a vote next time. I mean, and, you know, it might pass, it might not pass. If it doesn't pass, then clearly there's a majority that has some issues with this, that the Policy Committee would go back and try to, you know, meet whatever the issues are and, and, you know, adapt this policy to meet those issues so that it can get a majority. That, you know, and that's, I think where we are right now is taking a vote on what we have, and if it goes down, then fixing it, because there's, there certainly doesn't seem to be unanimity. Sometimes, you know, we'll, we'll recognize in the discussion of a policy, oh geez, we missed that, and there's, you know, you look around the room, everybody's kind of shaking their head and going, okay, yes, that's, you know, we're all kind of in agreement. Go back, bring it back for discussion, and then, you know, comes up for a vote.
And to be fair, it didn't take us a year to have to craft this policy. I think we tasked you guys with task, with drafting this in March, the end of March, and it's the end of April, end of May. So really, it was two months, which in policy time is like light years. So it could very well be that this starts small, and if there are, if there is a desire from the, from the middle schools, boy, imagine if Heinsburg and Charlotte had a middle school and a K-4, wouldn't that solve some problems? Just throwing that out there. That, that it could be, I mean, I think it, the policy's been pretty responsive. I think this would be something that could come back up pretty quickly.
Two comments. One, you had asked if the Policy Committee was going to meet during the summer. I think that's a yes, because we do want to have a policy in place before the start of the school year. I think that would be really helpful for students. I just want to throw another idea out there. We had talked about one time just being silent about the different schools and just having the policy and just let it play out at the K-8 buildings, just however it may, and just being silent about what schools. So I'm just putting that out there as another consideration for board members. But I just wanted to say, the Policy Committee will continue to work on this until we get it right, and I think we've had really good feedback. And I think Russ's point about at some point, we vote a yea or nay on it and then go back and tweak it.
I would like to get some, some input from the, from the K-8 principals, if this were to apply to the, to, to middle schools. I really would like their input on it. I think Adam has had a great deal of input, clearly, and he was very involved from day one, so I, I think that would be good to have.
Okay. So are we going to put this up for vote next month, or are we going to table it and revise it through the summer? Because if we don't vote on it on June 18th.
Twenty-fifth. I know, but we're getting there. I'm going to change it 17 more times by the time we get there. Well, could, could that happen before June 28th? Can policy meet before then?
Well, I, you know, I think it would be helpful to have a straw vote. Would, how would the board members vote on this policy now?
As it is now.
As it is now, and I, what I'm picking up is that it's probably a split board.
And if we go back for discussion at this point, you still got to, you know, for further discussion in the Policy Committee, then you still have to, you know, have it as a discussion matter at a meeting.
Before it can be voted on.
And then have another meeting as an act, you know, as an action matter. So I, unless, unless we're going to vote over the summer, you know, our, our last real opportunity is the business meeting in June, whatever date that might be, to have an action matter, to vote on a policy, so that we have a policy, might not be the, you know, the end, you know, the ultimate end product, we might change it, but to have a policy in place by the start of the school year, basically, I think means voting on this particular policy as it stands. And then if, if people want, then the Policy Committee can go back at it again and revise it. Otherwise, I don't think you have a policy in place by the start of the next school year.
Yeah, just rather than a straight up and down vote, because you may not want to have a, this is a pretty important policy, you may not want to split board, you could work it out so that somebody could vote to amend it, to include the K-8s, and you could vote on that amendment and then vote on the policy. That would be another way to move forward if you didn't want to wait. If you can't, if you don't think there's a way of a compromise, that.
Yeah, to me, the compromise is just be silent on the K-8s, period.
What does that, what does that mean? You just referred to that paragraph about it does not apply to the K-8s.
Right. So Colleen, are you talking about taking out the line underneath procedures that say that requests to just display flags at those schools would not, that it says it would not be considered, so we would strike that and then strike probably CVU principal and just say principal?
So essentially, it would be, there's no difference between that and.
I wouldn't be comfortable with that.
If, if we were going to move this to the K-8 level, we would, in the policy, I'd want to understand, you know, how do they get petitions? How are you, there's a whole level of, there's a whole, in my opinion, there's a whole different level that we'll have to work at that could potentially even restrict the CVU doing it at the younger ages.
Well, there is some confirmation with the, it's the protocol.
If we change this to a K. That won't work.
Mark, is, is the item number five, the petition, you know, I would read it, may be required.
Yeah. We just, we talked about.
As opposed to a petition being mandatory.
Right.
So just so people are clear on that, it's, you know, basically discretionary decision by Adam.
It's administrative. The board doesn't want to, we do not want to be voting on whether or not a particular slide can fly. I would just say board members don't want to touch that with a 10-foot pole. Excuse me. Oh, thank you.
We should be able to craft a policy that is going to be broadly applicable as opposed to every time somebody wants to fly a flag, having to come and make presentations to the school board. It should ultimately be an administrative manner.
And I think that would dictate the protocol and that's applicable. What will happen at CVU is probably different than what happened at CVS or Shelburne or Charlotte.
I think you have to have a policy for something like this across the district. I don't think that you can allow it individual schools to do what they want to do.
They're not. It's principal discretion as per policy. That's what the policy says.
Well, I can ultimately land with a superintendent's guess, you know.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure that, you know, when I bring this to the principals, they will want something that it, that they are going to hand together, right? All of them together. It's not going to be like Scott in Shelburne is going to have a different take on it than Greg in Williston, than Jen in Charlotte, or John in Heinsburg. They're, they're going to want to be of one mind, so they'll develop procedures that work for all of them.
So what we could do to hit a timeline of being able to bring a policy to the board. For a vote at the business meeting, if there was some interest in being silent on the K-8 buildings, just remove that language, we could have another reading at the retreat, essentially being the same, you know, we spent a lot of time on the protocol, the seven steps, I think that's pretty solid, and then just we can continue to tweak it and see how it plays out over time. We could, we could have another reading at the retreat and then have a vote at the business meeting.
Well, we have a meeting on June 4th, so we can do another reading on the 4th. I just, is, can we get input from the K-8s by that point?
That's what I'm just looking at, my calendar.
By June 4th?
By June 4th? We have Ron Robyn Monday and Tuesday.
Yeah, and I'd be hesitant to have a vote on a business meeting just because are we going to have a full board there? Like, I don't, I'm going to be that way.
So June 4th is in a business meeting?
Oh, I have it all done.
That's the second reading, and then we would vote.
Second vote at the business meeting.
At the business meeting. Can we call you? If you're not, can you call me?
We do, we do have a vote at the business meeting. That's not an optional show.
Just for clarification, are qualifications of the President of the United States just in the sense of we need to fly the flag at half mast, is that what you're saying?
Or.
Because I'm frankly more scared about that line.
No, it's the, it's the half mast. Yep.
But, so it's one thing to get the K-8s input. Is policy going to have a chance to incorporate that in time for June 4th?
Well, if we get a kind of a nodding of the head, just remove that language related to the K-8 buildings, I think we're taking care of it right now.
I'm not comfortable doing that.
I think what Mark said is by being silent to that says that you now have that policy across the entire district.
I'm not comfortable doing that without getting more input.
That's why we have a vote, that's why we have to vote on it, but I think we might have more people in favor of a policy that is applicable to the entire district, knowing that administrators are going to have to figure out protocol within the K-8 buildings. It's, you know, it's going to have to work itself out.
What about our K-8? What about a comorant?
Whatever. I mean, the whole K-8.
There are, no matter if there are any student, I'm going to leave, there is a requirement that student organizations has to request it.
But as part of the Williston district, do they fly whatever Williston?
Not necessarily. Not necessarily.
All things that have to be thought of, would be put in the policy?
No, if, if Williston Central School is flying something, and Allen Brook doesn't have a community of people that are coming, it actually, wouldn't it be wonderful to see what they come up in K-2?
If they did. I mean, we are trying to raise critical thinkers and people who want to take on the world.
Yeah, but we're also saying that you can only critically think by displaying a flag, like, we're not opening, we're not being innovative about ways that students can express their interests in other things. We're saying if you feel strongly about something, the only way you're going to do it is flying a flag.
We're saying that a piece of it, it's a piece of it. Yeah, that's.
And we're just saying that we don't want to limit children that are under the age of ninth grade from being able to have.
That is one, as one avenue to express themselves.
And I'm saying, I think that it's fine for parents to say that. I'd like to hear from the school administrators to see how that fits into their, how they see that playing out. I think it's only fair before we impose something on them to get their input.
And I don't think that anyone is disagreeing with you. I thought that what I was hearing was that the principal, input from the principals could happen before the next, the next meeting. I don't.
Sequentially, you have to get input from the principals. The Policy Committee needs to come back with new language at a meeting that it can be a discussion matter, and then it has to come back at a subsequent meeting to be an action matter. So if, you know, that all happens sequentially, so whether or not that can be squeezed in between now and the business meeting in June, which is the last time that the board would be taking official action prior to probably September, that's, you know, I'm not saying that can or can't work, but I think that's how it has to happen.
I can just say, real world purposes here, speaking of timelines, if you didn't take a vote at the first meeting in September, we've had one flag, and how many? I don't think that would end.
We could do it that first meeting. Maybe, I just wanted not to be, I don't, anyway. I just think that as a practice, I'm uncomfortable with crafting policy that pertains to expression, student expression and freedom of speech, that explicitly excludes a large portion of the district students in general. So not even talking about the flag policy, just talking about in crafting policy as a school board. I'd hate to see us limit our students' freedom of expression when we're crafting policy of freedom of expression.
If they're under 18, they don't have legal rights. Can't sign contracts.
I, I would say that maybe doesn't align with some of the language up there in the leaves, so I'm wishing I could read that better right now, because I think there's an argument to be made somewhere in there, that we aren't, we're actually.
So what I'm hearing is that.
I have been out of middle school for a while, but I have strong memories of it. It was very informative to me, but I, we have people who are closer to that age group, and I'm just wondering if we could ask for some perspective. If you're willing to share, if you're not, you can be silent, for sure.
I'm willing to share.
Not you.
I'm not a parent.
No.
I mean, I think from just the experience of raising the Black Lives Matter flag here, a really important part of that was the follow-up that we had, and the great thing about CVU is we had the avenues to do that through with advisory, and that's not something that middle schools necessarily have. And that's not something that middle schools necessarily have. So I think thought about how the message is going to be discussed afterwards at these middle schools, this needs to happen and needs to be really thoughtful. I don't know if you have any.
I agree with that also, but I think, I completely understand letting middle schoolers have an opinion and be able to express that in an avenue such as this, but I definitely understand the worry about having younger grades represented by older grades and their decisions. So I really like, understand both sides and I think it's really tough.
Thank you. Thank you.
No, that's a good point. How do you, how do you, you know, even if it's voted on and the, the middle schoolers, which I find with that age group, but the younger kids, how, how are the principals and teachers gonna have conversations around with those of why are we flying this certain flag and what did that mean?
So it sounds like-
I was just gonna wrap this up, because I think the plan we have, we're gonna get input from the K-8 principals. It's gonna go back to policy. If it happens in time for a discussion on June 4th, great. If not, the discussion will happen June 28th.
It'll happen.
It is the right date.
And then a vote would happen.
I think that 25th.
Oh, 25th, sorry. Who's my numbers person? You guys did this to me on finance. I get a number stuck in my head and that's it.
I spread it down because you said it.
Yeah, the 25th. So we will either vote on it on the 25th, if we get to discussion on the 4th, if we don't discuss it to the 25th, we'll vote on it the first meeting in September.
I, I don't know that I knew that we had a meeting on the 25th. I thought the last email center next meeting was to me.
Yeah, I was on the same page.
Yeah, me too. June 25th, I'm not even in town. I thought-
Okay, we'll get to the calendar when we get to the calendar. But, but in general, that's the plan that we will move forward with. Is everyone okay with that?
Well, if you end up voting on this in September.
Right, that's what-
I think that the 25th would be our time of eight.
Okay.
Well, it's not even important to have a quorum, it's a really important discussion for the whole board and I know people would feel bad not being in-
Being part of that. Okay. We should have done kindergarten first, that's the easy one, right? So, kindergarten. Who's closest in age to kindergarten who wants to talk about this?
Well, this came to us because of administrators having a period of time where they had to make a decision and evaluate and I think you came to us with some, a request from the administrators to make this simpler.
This is a request directly from the K-8 principals, so, you know, just what you're talking about, the input came first. Just especially because we have intra-district school choice now, the number of people who will go to a school and say, will you assess my student? And if the answer's no, then I go to the next school and say, will you assess my student? They have space, they say yes. Our experience was last year, this isn't the only piece of experience, but it's the one that we're dealing with right now. We had a parent who asked to have her student assessed. The student was assessed in the school where the school, that child had been in preschool and now this year wants to keep the kid back in kindergarten. That's not really the best thing for kids, right? That's not what we want and it's unanimous amongst the K-8 principals that they would prefer to have an entrance day policy that was cut and dry. And if any leeway is given at all, it's like in that first week, to address the parent who said my child was born August 31st at 10:50 PM, right? But having the whole month of September is really not workable.
Is there any discussion on the changes to the policy?
So the only question I have is that if that's not, the final decision for entrance eligibility will be made by the school principal.
It is currently and they're fine with that.
Right, but why, why pull that out if there's, if there's no decision to be made? Because we're saying you have a date.
Right. That would be if you had a little leeway. But, no, if there's no leeway, that's it.
If it's September, the first paragraph would seem to say it's September 1st.
The whole thing, right.
And I missed this last policy meeting, so I-
Right. You're right.
It's September 1st, boom, done.
If it's September 1st, that's it.
And, and the other thing would, would appear to give a little bit of wiggle room.
And this is referring to people who would maybe want to get their kid-
Into kindergarten because they were born September 19th. Right, okay.
Yeah, Russ, okay.
Any other discussion on-
I think a lot of families already believe that it is, it's just a, a strict date of September 1st and for the most part, they just accept that and just believe that that is, there is this already very true date.
But do we have, there is an exception if you're moving into the district and your child has already completed kindergarten and they're-
If you've completed kindergarten someplace else, yes, we put them in first grade.
Okay. That doesn't need to be addressed in here.
You know, if they come from another state or, we don't have any choice about that.
Okay. Any others? Okay.
It's always the ability to, sorry Lynn, just to move once someone's recognized, right? I'm just thinking of my own experience in a first grade or second grade class where a student was placed and then, but then he was in first grade, but then matriculated to third grade with that house because they realize, you know, so there's always that possibility too, right? But you're really trying to stop, is the two young folks from staying back and, right? I mean, it's easier to kind of move someone along if they're progress-
There is a belief that kids are, are going to have a better educational experience if they are fully five years old before they start kindergarten. After that, then, you know, like, every kid is different, so teachers are looking at them and deciding whether or not, I mean, one would hope that with personalized education and flexible pathways and all of that, that we wouldn't need to move them up and down because we would be able to address whatever learning style they had and need they had right within the classroom. But this is just about getting them into kindergarten.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the consent matters? Second? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Okay. Let's do the two next meeting dates and then we'll get to the third one. So we have our retreat, May 30th, 8 to 4, at All Souls on Bostwick Road in Shelburne. We have our next meeting on June 4th here at 6:00 PM and that is a board meeting, that's not a committee meeting, although if committees want to do something around that, they can.
All Souls will meet in the summer, so we have to squeeze it in.
I never heard that.
It's after you left.
The business meeting, so the 18th, Jean is not here on the 18th.
It's me.
Elaine is not here on the 18th.
So I mean, you could have a meeting without me, because it is mostly-
It's mostly, it, it really is mostly Jean's stuff. How much, how many people can, how many people can be here on June 18th?
June 18th or June 25th?
June 18th. First. One, two, three.
On June 18th?
No, no, no. I'm asking two dates, because there's confuses.
I can be here on the-
All right, raise your hands if you can be here on the 18th. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. So we do have a quorum for that. I don't know about Jeff. All right, so nine. All right, and how many people can be here on the 25th? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. All right, so we have more people here for the 18th. Okay. I'm gonna say this for the record. Our business meeting is gonna be June 25th at 5:30.
You just-
I told you guys! My head! Oh, my gosh.
Did anyone say the 28th?
I didn't! June, because I already crossed off the 18th, that's why.
I started the 18th and 25th and mixing them.
I was, totally. I'm coming up with a new, I'm, I'll meet by myself. June 18th at 5:30 here at CBU. Okay.
People, that does tend to be an extremely short meeting, so don't be late.
Yeah.
Because it's, it's just basically a consent agenda.
Okay. Do I have a motion to move into executive sessions for negotiation? Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye? All right, move in.